No. We'll start. Time prayer and then we'll do the prayer. By the United States of America, and to the representative, which stands for the nation. Men, it's the last meeting, I can motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, all second.
All favor. Uh, claims, Monica three hundred eighteen thousand fifty six dollars seven cents.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, again. All second.
Favor.
Aye. Judge Campbell.
She's not here.
Okay.
We'll go back around. We'll go back around. Here, so let's go to appointments. Start with the BZA. We have two new appointments and one.
Really? That's easier than you.
I guess we'll be easy first. Yep, yeah, BZA, sorry. Um, we just need to set terms. So if you guys we need to do this, but we need to clarify as far as um this is a cobbled up mess, so I would like to put Campbell on the one year term, uh, move Jake to two. Uh, John Allen needs to go to three, and Jessica, I believe, I need to go to four. And that will put us on our regular rotation. But it's supposed to be to make sure that every year somebody's coming out. That makes sense.
Can you repeat that?
Thanks. Campbell White for one year. Um, Jake Raul for two. Uh, John Allen for three. And then the other two, uh, Jessica Anderson and Levo for four years. Now we all have a.
Who's Levo?
They, they got it.
Okay. Guess we're getting, wait a minute.
He's, he's pretty honored, though.
Okay.
Yeah, counsel appointed him.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, is that that?
All second.
This.
Aye.
Aye.
Is Ethan going to be here?
Yes, he said it could just be a second, like this other court.
Okay.
Judges, so. Uh, move to ABC appointments. Um. Yeah. Campbell White, he's good to go.
Yep, he's still, he's still got a year remainder left in his term.
Uh, I believe we need to cross off Lynn. Because he has been, we had some talk the last two days. Not supposed to, he's not in there anymore, we're gonna cross him off. And then we're going to reappoint, uh, Mark Earl Looney, I believe, um, to a, he should be a four year. Uh, Amber Works for a four year. And John Strachan will come in as a two year. That should build the seeds of ABC.
Was there any reason why you removed a seven and a half year member on the board who showed up at all the meetings and done a great job? Is any particular reason?
Um, being honest with people, just uh moving in a different direction, I don't know what else.
Different direction from what?
Fresh ideas.
First blood, fresh ideas.
Okay. With that being said, I would like to publicly thank Sue Ann Anderson for her seven years of dedication to the board. Uh, the board members, if people don't know, I think they get highway or travel, maybe about twenty five dollars a meeting. Truly not worth the pain and agony they go through. And, uh, Sue Ann spent seven, over seven years on the board. Only missed two meetings that I can remember in my time. So, um, thank you very much, Sue Ann, I appreciate your service and the dedication to the county. You always had a level ahead and done what was best for the county. Not one particular group were or, uh, just in my opinion, nor did what was best for the county, but thank you very much.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, did I make a motion to approve? ABC appointments.
Indeed, so make a motion to approve.
Second.
Then, all favor.
Oh, I said I'm not wanting to say.
I will second.
Okay.
All favor. I can't really vote.
Yes.
She is not, she said she'll be down here as quick as she could.
Move on the civil five events, so. It doesn't need a few bit.
Let's grab them, yeah, and then we'll gravel. Gravel. Um.
The first price base. Two dollars, we're just like two point five sixteen five dollars a gallon. That is the diesel price, alright? The unleaded price is two point two three eight five a gallon.
All right, so everything else is gravel down. Now. It's not start.
In some areas. Through inside. Miles of. Old base for a hundred thirty five dollar per ton. Oh, the ninety dollar per ton for Georgia, that's the number eleven stone. Seventy one dollars per ton for number five. Seven three per ton for number eight. Seven six per ton for number nine. Seven eight for number eleven. That's with gravel. Seven eight for just number eleven.
If you want to move this along a little faster, we generally just open them, take, took them under advisement and let Jason look at all the prices.
Gravel, two more. SG is very important. Pollards. And, and each systems incorporated. Adecco metal and pollards. Bridge, I want to see. Alright. Now I need to know if there's any news. Except all this, taking under advisement.
I'll make that motion.
All second.
All favor.
Aye.
I don't believe.
See.
Um. Dylan, Lynn.
Johnny Park.
Johnny, yeah. Are you back there?
Yep, he is.
Johnny, you are, how? I guess I'm gonna ask, how are you gonna talk? Because we can, we can go on and see if, if the judge shows up, I don't want to hold her up any. Uh, so we can keep going for our agenda. And then, you know, maybe probably less than five minutes, that's fine, alright, no, let's proceed.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Good morning, uh, my colleague on that, she the CEO of WEN.
All right.
It's gonna take more than this.
Well, good morning, well, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to speak this morning, I'm Johnny Park, my name is Johnny Park, I'm the CEO of WEN. Um, just quick, uh, background on WEN, WEN is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. I was founded in two thousand seventeen, uh, primarily from the, the gift from Lily Endowment. And, uh, our overarching mission is to bring more prosperity to like any county region. Including ten, uh, Fountain County here as well. Um, and our core strategy is to accelerate the adoption of technologies in the region. So we help with a lot of farmers, manufacturing companies to help them adapt latest and newest technology so that they can be more productive. And, uh, we believe that if we can become a region where technology is being adopted faster than any other region in the world, then we have a clear competitive edge and it's going to lead to, uh, regional prosperity in the long run. Um, so in your folder, I'm going to just, uh, pay attention to this larger sheet here that is called regional impact. We've had the, uh, opportunity to work with an organization called Techonomy to assess our impact in the region. And, and some of you in this room actually have participated in the study. And according to their analysis, when as an organization has made total of hundred thirty eight million dollars of economic impact in the several years, uh, which is about three and a half times of the initial investment that Lily Endowment has put forward. Which is great news to us. Um. And, um, just to highlight a few more other things, uh, we were able to technically attract two point seven million dollars of federal grant. And, uh, we've invested ten million dollars in this region through, uh, what we call Regional Cultivation Fund in community organizations and schools in our region. We've been helping, uh, hundred seventy four manufacturers and farmers in our region. And all the companies that we've worked with, they've invested over two, one point five million dollars in a region. Um. So, again, uh, we, we, we just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the high level view of WEN. And Polly, on that, we'll just kind of talk about specific activities in Fountain County.
Well, I brought presents, I didn't know you had such a big crowd, but I don't have enough for anybody. But if you want to take one pass, so the ten million dollars that we invested in the community to organizations and schools was a mural project. And we had fourteen murals and four of them are in Fountain County. And so these postcards are pictures of each of the murals that we have developed in County. So, um, you guys want to see, yeah, there you go, you can pass them around. Um, okay, so if you pull up this sheet, Fountain Impact, this is the direct investment that WEN has made to Fountain County. So, over two million dollars has been directly invested in, in Fountain County. And if you take the same formula that Techonomy use for in the region, that's three and a half times, that means over seven million dollars has been impacted in, by WEN in Fountain County. Um, we're really excited that as part of that Regional Cultivation Fund, we were able to award schools over two hundred and seventy thousand to help with e-learning. If you look at the third bullet, you'll see all of the devices that we were able to purchase. We helped all three school corporations, they got MiFi hotspots, monitors, webcams, interactive TVs, laptops, iPads, and devices to light up outside voting areas. That was really exciting and we get feedback from the schools and it's exciting to see that impact on the kids for learning. Except it is a bummer that it takes away snow days, we can learn from home, so. Um, then you'll see in Fountain County, a hundred and twelve thousand has been invested by the tech companies that Johnny mentioned. We've served eight farmers in the county. If you look at the second bullet, we, um, we're just finishing up pilots with four of the tech companies, Terraclear, Digifarm, Scan and Farmwave. And they have invested in the county through these pilots and discounted products. We have a, um, matchbox, we partnered with Matchbox to do a program that accelerates entrepreneurship. And in Fountain County, you have four members, eight graduates and twenty two additional applicants. We have ten weather stations installed, including locations at Covington High School, Attica High School, and Purdue Cooperative Extension Services. Broadband equipment, one of the federal grants that we've received was for us to go put broadband equipment up on towers, we have two towers in Fountain County, Attica and Petersburg. And we even partner with ResNet located in Attica to provide services directly to residents and businesses. Um, so lots of things, I just had it on the back, there's some fun pictures. Um, and a list of who our grant act numbers are, but lots of fun things happening, and we thank you for letting us be part of Fountain County.
So, just really quickly, um, I'll tell you a tangible example of technology-driven economic, uh, development. So one of the companies that we have been working with is called Solimptech. They were originally based in Brazil, in South America. Uh, we met them about six years ago and they developed this more, uh, autonomous robot full of power that drives around the corn and soybean field and do automatic see and spray operations for weeks. So it's able to save a lot of chemicals and it's able to help the farmers with productivity. And that company has decided to move their headquarters to Indiana, in this region. And because of all the farmers that we've been working with and recently, and they've probably hired about seventy people since then globally to create good jobs. And then they recently decided to manufacture all those robots in this region as well. So not only were we able to track them to create more job, now they're manufacturing their robots in this region, and again, all because of the progressive farmers that this region has been working with us. Uh, and that's a type of example that we are trying to do more of. Again, our core mission is to bring more prosperity to the region and core strategy is to accelerate adoption of technologies in our region. And Fountain County has an incredible partner in the past years and we're really grateful for financially partnering with us. And Fountain County has contributed twenty thousand dollars a year the last three years. Um, we're respectfully asking to contribute thirty thousand dollars a year in the next three years. And as you can see, all the investments that we've made in Fountain County, there's a small portion of what we're asking Fountain County to partner with us. And it's really important as WEN goes out and seeks additional funding from large foundations and federal and state grants. Local support carries an incredible weight because it's an evidence that our work is being appreciated locally. So, uh, we, we thank you for your consideration and, uh, this will. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might.
Alright, questions, I just thank you for everything you've done for the county and you've been excellent to work with. Um, I know we've helped you when we could. I remember you called one afternoon on a Friday at four o'clock and needed a letter and we've, we had that letter for you within fifteen minutes and you ended up winning uh, winning a
Large grant.
Large grant.
Yes.
For that, so. Really appreciate everything you've done and working with me.
Thank you, thank you, Tim, great part.
Yes.
I don't have any questions.
No further questions for me.
So we did make, maybe make a, uh, certain patient to council, uh, Fountain County, uh, a few months ago and, uh, and, uh, so we, again, I know council is aware of our request and, uh, just again, if we, if there's any questions for us, please let us know. Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, as well.
Morning.
Oh, thank you for letting me join in here. Couple of things, the, um, the commissioners are responsible on a rotating basis for appointing someone to our regional public defender board. You'll recall that a few years ago, we, uh, created a public defender office with Park in Vermillion County. And so we have a representative.
And so we have a representative from each county. They serve one-year term right now, no, three-year term right now. Um and it's your turn for the board to appoint someone. The perfect person is a retired attorney. So I have talked to, uh Christoph was our, and so now he is the assistant prosecutor uh down in Le Mans County. So Jenny Larson, who was the deputy prosecutor for years in Warren County, has agreed to serve on our behalf. I can't find anybody in Fountain County that can take it. Um and so if you all think she would be appropriate, if you may know her, you may not know her, um she was John Larson's chief deputy for a really long time. And so if you all would consider appointing her as our representative to that board.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
No second. Absolutely. All all favor.
Bye.
All right. I appreciate that. Um Daniel's on his way up here, so I am happy to report that we got the scanner grant for the security scanner. So and I want to tell you, um Deputy Lethery was uh a great assistance to the court in getting that. It's coming from the Indiana Office of Court Services. So that's a about a forty thousand dollar grant. So we have to pay for it first and then we'll get the grant reimbursed. So if um if you all would want to do a motion to accept that grant after you see the paperwork, Ethan gives it his blessing. And maybe front the money for that and then we'll get reimbursed. That would be great. It's thirty eight thousand, seventy hundred sixty seven dollars. Is that right, Bill? The the company extended the the price for us.
Three thousand one.
Seven hundred and sixty seven dollars.
It's about thirty two.
But with the with the um maintenance and everything on it, it's thirty eight. Yeah, yeah, okay. Or that's what the grant amount is, so. Um and then the other thing I asked, prosecutor asked for him to come up here. As you'll recall, we get opioid funding um as a result of the opioid uh class action suit that was filed and that money comes into the auditor. Uh several counties, so you have delegated to JRA, which is our Justice Reinvestment Advisory Committee Commission uh locally to accept those grant applications and then make recommendations to you. We um are making a recommendation to you, and I don't have the exact amount, um to fund some literature to Johnny's house in Attica. I think it's two thousand one hundred dollars, something like that, for a course for their um residents there. Some are Fountain County people, some are Warren County people, some are not Fountain County people. Um but it's we have a restricted and a non-restricted fund. That's an appropriate use for our restricted funds. Uh and so uh if you would approve that, which leads me to our next thing, and I'll let you guys ask me any questions here. Okay, we'll get the exact amount. Um and I don't know, can you know what the balance of that is? But it's I think it's around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Thirty six.
Okay, okay. Um what a lot of counties have done is actually authorize their JRA. And they do this by ordinance, and I floated the ordinance by Ethan the other day to just allow us to approve the grants. Um Tim sits on our JRA, maybe you've forgotten that, but you still on the JRA, um and then I think it's Todd. You're not on.
Yeah, yeah.
So you still have uh a county voice in it and they can always put the brakes on, but it really just kind of slows things down on some of that. And you've been really good about taking uh our advice as an appropriate expenditure of that money. So um Ethan, did you have any concerns about besides the one typo?
No.
Um it's the rest of the ordinance that I sent to him is Warren County's ordinance and it's a very typical one and they got it from Tipton County. Most of the counties are doing this. So um if you want to think about it for a while, do you have any reservations?
Nope.
What did you use motion for?
Um to authorize the um JRA, our our local JRA, to approve grant applications for the expenditure of the opioid money.
That'd be my motion.
One second. All better.
All right. We should probably still adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, and so, yeah, if you want to, if you're good with him.
I'll learn it.
You can do that at the next meeting.
No, but adopting that would help us speed up this process. I think we had voted upon this, the books to fund this program back in November. And Johnny's house has been waiting on it, but it's just getting back for three guys.
So Ethan, can we go ahead and adopt it upon your? Have you approved it already or have you seen it or?
Yeah, it's not drafted though. It's the ones I've seen. It's got other counties in there, Warren County and stuff.
Probably get it to you for the end of your meeting, because I think you're going to be here for a little bit. And thanks to Ethan, my morning is open, so.
Can we approve it upon your drafting the?
Yeah, I think so.
That way we can.
She could have it. She could have it quickly.
It didn't start rocking back. So I can get it down.
Yes, we're counting to us.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've motioned to approve um Sandy Whitaker Brad and provision to the board.
I'll make a motion.
All second.
All favor.
All right. Hi.
Opening real quick, seventy two hundred for the maintenance, uh debt started paying a few thousands. The other managers having five twelve hundreds. Around sixty percent, thirty four or forty percent. Try and read all talk, six thousand.
I don't need you to read them all off if you're asking me.
All right. That'll write you, Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion. The motion approved is additions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor. All right. Department heads.
Uh Jason's back there. Jason? See guard.
And see guard.
I just have a couple of things for you guys. Uh the community crossings finance or financial inquiry that we signed, um I guess that was drafted back in December prior to us changing the scope of work. So USI contacted me this morning and the the price is usually different. It's thirteen, well, four thousand five hundred dollars more um for the scope of work. So they said that's going to be an issue. We can cut some things out of the scope of work as far as patching and some things like that. Um we have plenty of money. It's way still way below our five hundred thousand dollar match. So um I'll leave that for you if you guys want to look over it in time. I can get back to them. They're planning on opening bids possibly the first meeting of March. Try to give the companies enough time to see the documents and they don't have it. Uh as long as we're approved for, we get awarded the grant. Speaking of the community crossings and some other things, um our bridge inspection contract is up this year with USI. So I received an email from NDOT saying, and it's a question of proposals from other companies starting this year. So once we get that set up and approved, we'll have you with restoring situation. I'd like to have a couple, if not one, um commissioner and council member on that to do the scoring with me. And that goes for the H CIP projects as well, which um probably the next week, I'll I'll need somebody if they're available to go and do that scoring with us. One of our federal bridges that we're doing right now, a federal federal grant is for Bridge two oh two in Stonebrough. It's in the right of way buying process right now. Um I've worked with Ethan. He's reviewed the documents. There's five parcels. Uh I don't believe any of them were under over quarter of an acre. So it's very small portions. Um Ethan's reviewed the documents. I'm just going to go ahead and sign those. The landowners will be contacted prior to this and um we'll take care of that. So I just wanted to be honest with you on that. That's that will happen to the guys. Soon as it falls out, we'll try to get on the gravel roads and get some grain done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Jason.
Yeah.
Thank all the guys for the hard work during the snow here lately, too. It's been tireless couple of weeks, I know.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
George.
Sticking in real quick. Morning. Uh just got uh some numbers I gave us to the council last week. So guys. I got one. So this is our year, end of the year numbers. Uh if you can tell, this, the first one is the uh twenty twenty four. K W and and I don't know both, but I tell you guys, familiar what I do is I break it down per month, like transports, S R, which are signature release, will go to a resident and they decide they don't want to go to the hospital and we have to have a paper signed. So we track that. Standbys or we'll go to a call and either a fire call uh on standby or police or whatever. Uh signal nines, we're in route, we get disregarded. Uh med one backup, basically what that was when we were running three trucks before we pulled the fourth one in. If the two in Eatersburg were out on call, we would pull that truck down to Eatersburg, being center of the county. Um as you can tell, that kind of dwindled down around March, April. That's when we pulled in that fourth truck. We do track when we fly uh individuals out. And then Attica backup, that is when um we were moving. At one time when we were moving, med four was still in Eatersburg. We were moving it to Attica. Now we've changed that and now med four is in Attica majority of the time. Due to the weather right now, it's kind of hit and miss. We're trying not to let it set out very long. But we finished out twenty twenty four at two thousand five hundred sixty runs uh compared to twenty twenty three. We had two thousand six fifty eight. We started seeing the change. Uh uh we don't do the transfers out of Wingsport anymore like we used to. Um um Warren County takes care of those. That's part of it and it's, I think we just kind of settled out a little bit from COVID two. So that's kind of why we're where those numbers are at. Any questions on those? Uh far right, you look, uh you track our collections. Uh for twenty twenty four, we finished with nine thirty nine, three oh eight, ninety one. Uh if you look at not twenty twenty three, you can see where we finished on that. So uh we do um there is a new individual in office right now. Uh Kerry Towns stepped down in February. Uh I had another lady in there and she's pretty aggressive. Not that Kerry wasn't, just different styles. And uh that's why there's a little bit of a difference there. You guys have any questions on the numbers?
Where all the helicopter runs to P H I?
Most of them was, but there's a few of them that wasn't. Uh we we would have still, as it was a question asked last week in council meeting. That was a question that majority of them was, but there's a few that when they're not available, we'll call for the other agencies like Lifeline. Uh we've called Aerie back out of Brazil, Indiana, and we've used Airline out of Chantaine. But we know one flight pays for the for the shift, you know. No questions on that. Uh the other thing I I think I might have told you, just refresh, is we did apply for the AFG grant. Uh we asked for six monitors and the the maintenance program on that, it came in at about four hundred and ninety five thousand. But we only have the mass five percent of that. But they the number I came up with, five percent, and they were coming up was still a different, but it's it's in the application. So if we're awarded, we would have to come up with twenty three thousand, five thirty four on that. But it's a ninety five percent, five percent match. They'll give ninety five percent. We do five percent. It's a very highly competitive grant, so fingers crossed we'll get it. But six monitors?
Yeah.
Six monitors and then the maintenance, uh remaining maintenance program with that, too. And the monitors, uh with all the accessory that they dropped on my head, I think they were about sixty four thousand. Give or take something. As I told the uh council last week, no news on the Fremont outside of whatever you already got. I told you guys already, so try to stay in touch with that. Um else, do you guys have anything for me?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Jenny's going up. I think. Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm just asking for approval to use eleven thousand dollars out of our local health department trust account grant. It's that state grant. We have carryover funds. Um that align our the last from the budget that they asked, that the council asked if we could pay it out of our grant.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion and agree.
All second.
All favor.
All right.
Anything else for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else. This sheriff. Sheriff back there. Okay.
Command and public comment over our measures meeting.
I do.
Yes, this.
Lou Anderson. Erin, at the last meeting, you said there was two members, Joe Edgerton, leaving the board of the APC. And K W used to reach out to all board members to see if they wanted to remain remain on the board. My question is, why wasn't I called?
Well, I told K W to reach, well, actually, um Laura Williams came into my place of work and I asked her to shoot this question in. And I told K W that um he didn't need to reach out to Laura. This is not my place of work. Um Mark was the only one who reached out to him to see if he was still interested in being on.
Uh let me see that.
Um Jamie.
Jamie is a citizen.
And then we um had interest from other people that I posited. Um again, I'll keep you make it uh the direction we're heading and that's where we'll simple that.
I talked to Laura.
Yeah.
And Laura expressed to me that, you know, we've been on it for seven and a half years. We've come along to see it through and we're so close to these ordinances. But uh she wasn't really ready to go board and you told her that K W would reach out for her. If she wanted to stay on.
I don't know what to tell you, because that's the exact opposite of conversation I had with Laura standing in front of my cash register at my license plate. Said, if you want to stay on, you can stay on. And she said, I really want to get off because I'm busy with my new job. I said, okay, I'll find another place then. And then about thirty seconds. So either you're lying or I'm lying.
I'm not lying.
Okay.
So I guess we just have to ask Laura, but but still, I was stopped.
And I apologize. That is, that's my fault. I didn't reach out to to ask if you wanted to stay on or not. Um I know we, there was a decision made to it was up for reappointment. There was a decision that was made to put some some new voice and new blood on the APC. And that was, that was the decision that was made. Simple as that.
I mean, Sue, we can get into details, but I prefer not to do that in public.
Oh, oh, that's that's fine. But I just wanted to go back to the last commissioner meeting to let you know.
Well, that's the measure. You guys said there were two and I spoke with those two. And one said they didn't want to be on, the other one said he will did.
Thank you again, Sue.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
I had absolutely nothing to do with it.
Tim's a hundred percent right. Tim is a hundred percent right. Any other questions?
Somebody inside here.
Working on it.
I said we can meet over there.
Over where?
City Valley. They got a nice, they got a nice guy.
We're we're working on that with the SaaS got there. Yes.
I appreciate the joint meeting here that they can also.
Well, we have important things to discuss, we don't need to be in a room and do it, so that's my only reason for calling, so. All right, well, motion closed.
Can we?
Oh, Larry?
Yes.
If there is any. Any.
I grabbed, yes, we would, you, you made a motion, you made a comment of a, 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 why Doge? And yes, I, I don't see why we don't look into that by transparency alone. Um, excuse, excuse, I forgot, that was on my list I grabbed you, so, uh, yes, that is in the conversation, uh, we just got there. The legal. Because we got done with getting command, started in go from there, but that's I have. I don't see why that would get terrible like that. Like you said, transparency, there's been lots of money, like they're doing an efficiently boss.
There you go.
Right. All right, motion closed.
Can we leave the commissioners meeting open, just in case she comes back with that ordinance?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Gerald, you have another question?
Yes, I just tell you the five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars, does that like? Ever a quarter or, or what does that really matter?
The three thirty eight?
Yeah. Are we going to expect this monthly?
The three thirty.
Pardon me?
That's for a grant. They're writing this.
Carol.
That, that is the H F I money we're getting from the state of Indiana. At budget time, we were only able to do the forty eight thousand some odd dollars for that budget. And then we were approved for the H F I. So this is an additional to put that grant on. The books to appropriate it, that, it's just the process, the council and commissioners have approved it. But we have to go through this for D L G F, we put it on the books for cooperation purposes.
And we've blown, we're examining with the commissioner meeting still open.
Yeah, I think so. No, you're good at that.
I believe it opens.
Yeah, listen, I just. We can move it open, just kind of remember both. I can see things.
Don't worry, you see, no, you're fine.
There's one here, there's one here.
I got one, okay, now my job. We're there.
Since it's joint, I was on the joint one, Ken.
Am I ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'm going to most ministers, I'm opening the meeting, join me.
You take the opportunity to open the county council joint meeting with the commissioners?
Well, we're here for what's on here, for what we need to discuss highly granted. And it's been part of this for a long time, I think there's money sitting in there, we need to do, well, now we have it. Have to. I would rather, so, we'd like that project to start rolling downhill, getting somewhere, so. I guess we don't need to be in agreement where we want to be, so. I'll say my ideas. I would like to get a, um. Say a final vision of what Jason needs. Um. All the way to completion, however, doing it to completion this step of the way, uh, is not, I don't think feasible. However, I think we can get most of it done, so I think the garage part of the offices, um, fuel station, the salt barn. Could give us, uh, a good start to where we need to be. You have.
So, I said, I'm glad you're, uh. Middle of last year, yeah, uh, just do a preliminary layout of what we're thinking of. Um, so if you guys want with this, it's available. Um, also. Salt Barn and Gracel Construction, we have plans and this was pricing from January twenty fourth point three. Uh, I went through and got three estimates, as you guys asked, and, um, Gracel came back. So if we need to revisit that, but there's plans here. And then also, um, we had went to White County. And looked at their facility and their layout and how they have everything structures and we, um, kind of. Based our plans on, on that building, that, that layout of their facility, it's very nice, we don't need. A lot of things that they have, but just the palette flow and everything, the garage was, uh. Really something to see.
I think since we have the plans, I've talked to Jason and I've actually looked at the plans, um. I think he thinks that it might be a little more than what he would need, so he could tweak it to whatever. He would like to do and cut some things down, um. I think since we already paid for those plans. I think we should utilize those plans as much as possible.
Week. As far as this preliminary play out, yeah, I don't have anything as far as.
Right.
Solid.
Can you clarify for the public the location they're looking at?
So we're looking at, um. On U S forty one, where our stock poly yard is, it'd be just south of the, uh, E M T location. And we did leave enough setback for the helicopter pad. So we, it's a little tight in there for what we're looking at, but I think it's feasible, so.
So, where do you want to go from here?
Guys interested in going to look at some bids, yes, bids.
We have these preliminary, what we get to some cost upfront. I, I mean, and.
I think the salt barn had something on it.
The, the salt barn, yeah, I mean, this was.
Results of the barn.
Yeah. What we were looking at was, um. Soil furnished and salt price was two hundred and eight thousand.
That's just for the salt.
That's just for the salt, yeah.
Can you, can you explain to him as well how much money we're going to save over time in salt barns, since we're not sweeping it to rain and snow?
Sure. So, yeah, we kind of did a little study and we were losing approximately thirty plus forty percent of our salt. Just from erosion and the bleaching out.
Excellent.
Um, so that's kind of where, we, we were three hundred tons of salt every year, mixed with our sand. And, um, it's just, we don't have it covered off there, so it's just bleaching out into the. The digital side of forty one and sooner or later, I'm, I'm afraid. You know, say, say something slower. Um, but this is just a canopy out, nothing buys it to Montgomery County to, to their location, it's, it's basically just a, um, open ended. Three sided canopy of, um, concrete asphalt, or where we, so.
I think from a common sense standpoint, it's time to move forward, we've got to start, I mean, where they're at now. This definitely seems to have issues, and we need to fix that, so we have this time to move forward and get some bids and see where we stand, not to mention we're on a timeline with the, the art fund, so.
I say, let's, let's move and get something started here.
We, do we look at, we, we had some bids, correct? When we were last year, or is that process going to be done again?
I think we did have some bids from a couple of, did that.
Yeah.
And the estimation for the symbol.
Yeah.
I have to look those back up.
I knew we had a bid from Mark two A W, I believe, and K J G architectures.
It was at least four.
Probably just add another fifteen or twenty percent to them, or thirty percent. Probably going to be six million. Six to ten million.
We also have a lot of.
Be realistic.
We also have a lot of scrap that we need to get removed out there, um. We contacted Walton Enterprises over in St. Paulsville a couple times and haven't received anything back on from them as far as anything. Getting it for us, so my next step was going to call Morvis, over there, find somewhere they can over there. Remove that, or they, they, they don't even pass, so.
And you're continuing for Roger on all the engineering aspects of, not the salt barn, but the. Buildings and everything.
Yeah, everyone's involved, yes.
But Erin, you, you're, before we get started, you got to, we got to figure out how we're going to get the money.
Amen.
And it's not going to be. Funded with all the budgets, so yes, why do you want to borrow it?
I think we have to. We have to have someone give us a bid, so we know what we're looking at and then go from there on, um. The money aspect of things, we're, I mean, we can sit here and say. We're going to need ten million dollars, but until we have some sort of plan. And bids coming in, we aren't going to actually know an exact figure or closer figure.
Yep, and if, if you've got a preliminary drawing, where you can go from there and tweak it, fine tune, pull out what you don't need, and maybe add some things you do need. And then open it up for bids and then, then we can go from there, because like, like Kelly just said, you can, you can shoot and ask for twenty, but she only takes ten, you. But if you're, if you're, if you're going to go, say, ten dry, you're going to go, it's going to be four, five, six million dollars. Why not? And we're not going to borrow, why not go a little farther and do something with nine months? And all in shot.
Well, I do know that Dana's working on, um, is Dana still here? I know that she's working on a, a grant for around five hundred thousand. So that would, if she's awarded that grant, there's obviously a match. Um, Dana, I don't remember the percentage you told me.
Is the work a grant, I'm looking to, of the seven hundred and two thousand and seven eight percent match?
Thank you.
Five hundred thousand for a building or a.
Or what we can put towards. And do just watch that.
Okay.
And obviously, um.
And the revisit last two weeks, two weeks ago, Erin had made the comment that. Maple Corner was just to move the county employees out while we worked on the courthouse. That in fact was not correct, the initial reason for buying Maple Corner was for nine one one. One hundred percent. So then we were going to put other things in it, and then, yeah, move people out. And as far as the third, or as far as the, uh, doing the construction of the courthouse while people are in it, we knew all along. That there could be people in it, it was a thirty percent difference, and when you take thirty percent times fifteen million bucks, that's four point five million dollars. Which would have probably redone the annex. And, uh, been a significant savings, plus you. Have lawsuits. Um, if people are in here and ask us, this gets in the air. It's just made a lot more sense to clear the building and do it all at once, but that's all down the drain now, so. Just wanted to bring that point up.
Um, Erin and I, and Dana and I, and even Andrew Crowell and myself have talked about a location for nine one one, there is a lot east. Of the jail that, um, currently has their own driveway, would not be attached to. The jail, um, that would be an ideal location. For the nine one one center, we just, we have to get them out of here, they're in a closet, there are no rooms smaller than this, probably half the size. And, um, they're running out of room and they just don't have the facilities that they need, um. So that's just a, a tossed around idea.
Put it close to the jail like that, could we use that with money?
Well, that's the special.
It's got to be a function of the jail, nine one one is not a function.
Right.
If we, if we hooked it to, it would be a fun.
No.
Mm-hmm. It's a standalone. Mm-hmm. Unfortunately. So those are just thoughts and ideas. Any thoughts on that?
And I couldn't see putting any building up for less than three million bucks in today's environment.
Right. I do know there's stipulations on the nine one one center, according to. Um, is it Homeland Security Dana? Yeah, it has to be, it can't be less than two thousand square feet.
Over located, the minimum is one thousand nine hundred and fifty square footage by the state.
Thank you, Dana.
So now that you. Questions on nine one one, Kelly, we had one of the best, well, we have the best. Um. Consultant in the state of Indiana in Barry Ritter. Had him on contract, and I think that's over now, that we could always ask him questions.
I was wondering that the other day.
Yeah.
About him.
Going with the last conference and he said it pretty much so done in Fountain County.
So those are the two major projects that we're looking at this year.
Would I be able to proceed anyway? People getting played.
I'm sure, I mean, that money's. It has to be spent on, so.
We can have a delay in the twenty six.
I think we should at least do that all for us. And if it comes up to some, after an hour, we'll never. We're going to have longer conversations, but, uh.
Commissioner, I don't think we can get bids on, although there are bid documents, and that is after complete design, what we could do, we could, I could say with just some. We, we adjust the layout the way he sees fit. And then we can get engineers that send it together, or some people from owners, some local builders that do that. And then we can bring some surreal real numbers to you guys, the only time they're going to get really real is when you have the document, and that will get a total bid, let's do that.
Preliminary idea, at least. Sounds good.
And I agree with Jeff. I want to know what's going to be paid with, what, what. Where, where the funds are going to come from, Baker Tilly gave us a good idea two years ago, year and a half ago, if you'll pull those documents and look at them. On income tax and property tax. So that's what we're going to have to decide. Seven point eight million dollars was coming from Ranger. I think it's still personally coming from Ranger, because I don't think the vote for the council really stopped anything on that. But we could have seven point eight million dollars coming in after the first solar farms kicks off. In five years, Jim, to go with that.
Not at one time.
In five years, Carol. In five years, we have seven point eight million dollars after they start generating electricity.
Over a five year period.
Over a five year period, yeah, that's what I said.
Oh.
Hey, that's what I said, neither, you can see a bond, we're going to have to bond either way. The bonds can be paid for out of that money instead of tax, instead of. Income tax or property tax.
Well, I'd like.
Then you got another one up in, in, uh, the Attica area. That was thirty two million dollars that could come to the county. And if you guys remember, the guy from Baker Tilly. I can't remember his name, I can only remember Jason Semler, said numerous times, this is a gift from the state of Indiana. You will never see the state of Indiana give dollars like this away again. Other words, saying, take it, if it's going to be here, take it.
Nothing is free, there was a price.
Well, two things that I heard over the weekend.
So that's.
One is. One is House Bill, I believe it's sixteen twenty eight in regards to permitting renewable energies. In the counties of Indiana. Uh, if the House Bill gets passed, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. If the House Bill gets passed, the control for renewable energies will be removed at the county level and the state will.
That particular bill, Kelly, was for by like if uh, someone is right on the fountain. Fountain Montgomery line because there's not a river there, I guess, but two counties.
No, that's not what it is. They're removing the local control. They wanna remove the local control at the township level as well.
Well, I don't disagree.
So there.
I do disagree with that's gonna happen in the future for sure, but this particular bill is says it's, it's a. It is a um, you have to have two different counties involved. The first sentence says that, Sharon. Okay, the first sentence says that. Now, that's not saying that back in the bill somewhere, they're not gonna stick. Something like that. But is, it is strictly for a multi, multi jurisdictional, is what the wording is.
It defines a multi jurisdictional infrastructure project as a project that one involves the siding, construction, deployment of facilities, equipment, infrastructure. Used in the generation, transmission, distribution and storage of electricity, gases or fluids. Or water and two will have specified impacts on residences, businesses, political subdivisions in more than one county in Indiana. Provides that the state is the sole regulator.
In more than one county.
Of the following with respect to a multi jurisdictional infrastructure project to the extent not preempted by federal law or otherwise under the jurisdiction of a federal agency or authority. The siding and construction of any electrician generation facility with capacity of fifty megawatts that generates electricity to directly or indirectly. Used for the furnishing of a public utility service, the siding, construction, employment of all facilities, equipment. And infrastructure used in the transmission, distribution or storage of electricity, gases, and fluids or water provides. For the preemption of all other regulation by political subdivision or local authority of the siding. Prohibits political subdivision from taking specified actions concerning the siding, construction and deployment of the facilities, equipment and infrastructure in connection with the multi jurisdictional. Infrastructure project. And it goes on to say down here that they basically don't have to repeal a statute requiring ordinances, regulations. And statutes in effect at the time, a zoning permit or approval is issued to govern in the development for at least three years. And moves parts of this repealed statute to other locations. The way I take it is that yes, it's. Side by side and they don't have to come to the county to permit.
That's exactly right. That's what it says.
Which is what I said in a meeting back, I believe in early fall. And I believe I was at a commissioner's meeting or an APC meeting that state, I stated that. This was coming down the pike, that they wanted to remove local control. So it's not gonna matter in the future whether we get money from these companies or not. And then it was stated yesterday because they're gonna take that option away from us.
So you better get it while you can. So that bill will never make it through because there's. The politicians in Indianapolis have seen what's happened to the county at the county level. Great commissioners were beaten because of one thing, solar win. I guarantee you the people in Indianapolis, won't take them long to figure out, we're not touching that. So I doubt that it makes it this time, but it will. It will eventually, it will be just like hog confinement, the state will take it over. Which takes all the pressure off us locally, so.
But it also takes off our ability to control what happens here in our county. So anyway.
Roger, let's, let's do that. Some type of the money amount. And then they're gonna have to figure out all what to do from there, but at least.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the layout and we'll be adjusting that someday and sure we'll be good.
Never the special on highway, Roger. I've stated, I was here briefly, your guys' meeting that. Now we're short on money, but I wrote some checks, so.
And he needs additional money because it changed, didn't it?
Changed, yes, the last, the final letter that we had signed earlier. Was for um, the scope of work prior to what we decided to do now, back in December, so the last. Letter was four hundred and forty four thousand five hundred and one dollars and this one I, I gave it. There's like twelve thousand five hundred additional. It's like four hundred and fifty seven something. And as you stated in the last meeting, this isn't something, this isn't something that's new, we.
We've been doing. So like I said, we neither, I'm forfeiting it now, money's there. From the state, we don't wanna fix roads next year, we don't have to spend half million.
Well, since we went ahead and approved the four hundred forty four thousand five oh one, council, do you wanna do the additional approval today? Twelve thousand five hundred? All of those in favor? Six oh. We're good.
Move down a way, I'm. We have, I haven't even said it. Um, my own opinion is that the, the county. Is, is interested in holding relationship with them, you have. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That they do, I have no interest in walking away. Their purpose was to do economic development. That's what I'd like to see happen. That's, I mean, that's, I said that in the last meeting. I said that before, I said in the last meeting, I'll say, I have no interest in walking away from almost a million dollar investment. You guys got anything to add? But that's, that's my take, that's all I can say.
Is that so, Chris, on the document?
We should have brought. Yeah, that's funny.
Well, we have a debate, obviously, on the board and like your input, um. We did accomplish a lot in a year and a half and if you remember when we started, uh, it was a trial period. We went to uh, we approached Covington to see if they would sign this up for contract and they were not interested. Uh, we approached. This is before uh, we signed the accounting contract.
You wanted all the, all the county's money.
Yes, separate. They were all separate.
And no, I was not willing to do that.
Correct. And, and Petersburg was interested, but uh, they didn't have the money or didn't want to. And so we approached. At the time, the uh, commissioners and that was Andrew Hall, Tim and Brenda. And we said, we've got a problem because of the ready to grant program that the state had just released. Uh, went through the leados and we didn't have one. And so they agreed that we could uh, take a look at it and then it went before the council and we had a discussion. Uh, there as well. It was meant to be a trial period, a three year trial period. Um, to invest in economic development, which we had not done previously uh, in this way, real leader. And so um, the uh, tension that is between the communities. Uh, because we haven't been working together in this respect is still there. And a year and a half in, uh, we are still finding the same challenges. Uh, we have been able to um, achieve many grants and solutions that were on uh, the agreement. And uh, we have made considerable progress, but when the uh, council decided not to fund us. Uh, for this year, uh, then it became an, an issue. And so obviously there's a lot of angst and anger uh, about Wega. I don't personally think it's fair. A lot of stuff that's being said online is not accurate in any way. Um, but it has grown to a considerable anxiety. And so um, we've had some debate about what to do. We are now without contract uh, and without funding. And we do have a one, one year wind down period. We did stocks, pile some cash thinking we were gonna hire people. So we have some money to continue uh, representing the county uh, in the interim. But um, you know, I would like to personally make a recommendation. With all the conversations that have been going on and the anxiety associated with Wega and um, past performance, et cetera. Um, I think the county is better served by creating your own version of economic development. You know, spend a little bit of time talking about what you want. There are four different ways that you can do this. You're not gonna lose anything by doing this because um, you know, what we accomplished is still there. You can have the commissioners do it by themselves, by law. You don't need anything other than commissioners representing the county in economic development. That's a challenge because the commissioners have other responsibilities and they cannot be in meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, you can also hire staff within the courthouse that work for the commissioners. And that does work. It's a challenge as well because uh, it becomes political at some point, but it does work. You can do a private public nonprofit. So it's a private nonprofit, but it is managed by elected officials. And in that respect, there are open meetings, you know, it just operates completely differently. You can also do the private nonprofit, which we have. But um, facilitate it in a way that has elected officials and it has open meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, because we created Wega long before we showed up at county level. We created it to run the small business incubator and market downtown Attica. That's the reason. We have a private nonprofit without, we have a private nonprofit without uh, local government representation. And we have private meetings. That has become a major issue. And um, on, you know, all you have to do is get online to Facebook and they read about it. It's, it's a major issue. Um, and I think that's why some of the things that are blown completely out of proportion have happened is because we have a private board. Um, and we just, we have a representation, we have Jeff on the board, we had Brenda previously, so we did have representation, but. It was private. So my recommendation is just. Do what you want, you know, and we'll help you do it. Um, there's no reason to keep, you know, beating up on the same issue. That keeps uh, driving us down and maybe have a private board. Um, one of the challenges we have with this current moment is timing. Um, Attica, as you know, we worked in Attica long before we showed up at the county level. And we had all of the projects that have been receiving grants and we're very proud of that. Um, started long before we came to the county to discuss. And those grants um, are somewhat in jeopardy. Uh, based on our current activities because we haven't landed them yet. We've got six million dollars, two million from Ready Two. That goes to the business incubator that serves the whole county and four million dollars from Lily, private foundation. That goes to uh, build the market in uh, Commissary. We do not have them. We have received formal approval from the staff and we've been awarded. But I can't announce them because uh, we haven't gone through on Ready Two, we went through the board approval, but not the agreement. And on Lily, we have not received board approval. Um, I have received board approval in order to receive that grant. So it's a really awkward time for us to be doing this. Um, and so my recommendation is so that we don't jeopardize the work, hard work and commitment that Attica has made. Millions of dollars of commitment, long uh, term investment. Uh, and the grants associated with that, let's just do something new at the county level. And um, I think we're, we're gonna have to talk about this as a board. You know, how that works, if, if you should choose to do that, but you know, we could split the board, we can use the resources you've already given us. We can use our attorneys, our accountants, whatever it takes to help the county move forward. The goal is getting everybody moving forward, uh, letting everybody win. Um, do it the way you wanna do it. Um, at the moment, it's just, it's not working. Obviously, if you haven't funded us, it's not working. So that's my two cents.
My name is Bill Glass, I'm the president of the board of Wega as well. And so we've had lots of discussions about this and again, you know, we'll work however the county wants to do it, right? Obviously, I think uh, the last year and a half's been difficult. Uh, you know, we've made some changes in Wega. But uh, you know. Me personally, and again, this is just Bill's opinion, it's not the board's opinion, right? Cause the board has to make a decision, you know. We're eight people on that and one, you know, I just wanna vote. It's Jason's one. Uh, Brandon's one, but um, you know, we wanna make the. County absolutely needs economic development, there's no doubt, right? And the investment you have is coming back and, you know, if you do do something else besides. Using Wega and all the PR issues that we have today. Um, you know, that investment's still with the county. That, that doesn't go away. You've invested in it, it is there, there's uh, you know, contracts uh. We have without the funding and without going forward, you know, we need to look at how we're going to move forward. And this board will need to make a decision, but we wanted to make sure, listen to your inputs and what the county wants to do as well. To kind of give you an idea that where, where we're at and what's on the board members. Thanks.
Uh, very great mayor of Attica. Um, I, I should.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I should preface this by saying that I had to talk to any of these gentlemen prior to writing what I wrote down here so I could remember what to say. I, I wanna thank you for, for your time. Uh, I wanna thank everybody uh, involved with the county. For um, helping me to build bridges, road with silos, and that's been my mantra ever since taking office. Uh, I think it's important for everybody to understand my position on the legal issues, Mayor of Attica. Some facts here, um, that you may or may not need on Facebook. Uh, the city of Attica has had an economic development contract with Wega, uh, currently paid two hundred thousand dollars per year. And I, and I read a lot about how much the county is putting into the Wega corporate, but. Uh, Attica is putting in two hundred thousand dollars per year and that was before they went into the county uh, contract. Uh, Wega is acting as an economic development contractor for the city of Attica and for Fountain County. And the reason I say that is because uh, I watched your last meeting online, someone said that uh. I was at a Wega meeting that I shouldn't have been. And I'm signing up on two hundred thousand dollars a year and if I don't wanna show up at a Wega meeting, I think I should be there. And I think you guys should be there because you're paying the bills too. So I will say that. Attica continues to be the only city, New York, the only municipality to fund Wega outside of the county. And to help with the efforts in our downtown to develop and operate a business incubator concept. In order to spur business growth and entrepreneurship, not only in Attica, but county level. This concept will require ongoing commitment and vision for Wega to operate into the future. And that's one item that kind of has me worried, given the uh, current climate. With uh, with Wega and the situation. Can that happen? Will that happen? Although I've been assured by the legal board that is committed to finishing the project. There has not been any plan presented to me that solidifies the hope that will, that will continue to fruition. I've heard comments regarding funds that the county has committed for the building and its refurbishment. Uh, I should note that the city of Attica funded the purchase of that building and. Donated the downtown lots for the marketplace. As it sits today, this building has potential, but it is not marketable. Uh I, I've read and heard comments about county needs to get their money back from that building. It may be worth fifty thousand dollars out on the open market today as it sits. It's been gutted. Uh it's, it's not this jewel that's sitting out there that can be sold and money refuited from today. Uh it is my understanding that grant funds. Um are subject, or excuse me, project specific. And not simply a slush fund for Wega to use in other places as they choose. If the projects do not move forward, I believe this funding will go away. I should, it should be clear that these grant funds are not coming to the city of Attica directly. But are being spent like funds are spent in other communities in the county. For projects or infrastructure that benefit all of us in the county. As I have shared with some of you, one on one, I still have concerns. That the current vision for the business incubator may be in jeopardy. At, if, if we in our contract that we did does not have a solid plan in place for moving forward. I believe that even if the county decides to cut ties with Wega. That uh. I believe the county does not have a solid plan. We don't have a solid plan. Um lost in place here, sorry. Um. The business incubator will continue to move forward. If Wega or if the county is not part of it, but that doesn't mean that the county won't benefit from. So yes, there is an investment from our county in that business incubator downtown and, and I've heard several numbers thrown out. But if it comes to fruition, whether the county is still involved. Or not involved, it's going to benefit everybody in the county, probably all the entire county. Um thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Appreciate working with all of you. Thank you.
Now let me clarify one point uh the mayor made. Uh the two hundred thousand dollars that the city gives every year is project related. So it does not penta Wega expenses uh or management, but it does go specific to projects that they have designated for us to work on. Um and also associated with that is the three million dollars that the city committed. To buying buildings and tearing them down and rebuilding streets. The reason Attica is succeeding is because they've been at it longer and they're pouring money in. Um and we've got a terrific support associated with, you know, all grant agencies want to know that the local community has stepped up. And that they're willing to take it on and invest. Um and that, so that's what we've done together is you've created that dialogue and that scenario. We just don't want to put that risk. And unfortunately, due to timing, it is at risk. Um we are going out for bids for the interior of the uh. Uh incubator buildings. We did the exterior many months ago and, and the grant got delayed and so we have to go up the bids again. So uh that is happening in a week and a half. And then when we get the bids back towards the end of February, we're in negotiations with the IVC on that particular grant. And if we can get through that, then that grant will be in place. Um following that, we have um a board meeting, a board meeting with the IVC where they vote on our Lilly grant. And let's hope it happens. Um and that's the middle of March. And then by the end of March, we'll have that agreement in place. So essentially, in the next sixty days is absolutely critical. And uh what we can't have happen is uh, you know, and I know there are legitimate reasons for it, but we just cannot have a political ruh-rah, right? A big fight uh in the middle of this process. Because there are thousands of projects stacked up behind us. They'll just hand it over to the next one. And I, I will say, um I, I was a little shocked and others are a little shocked that that's, you know, a community of three thousand people. Won six million dollars. I mean, it's incredible. It's incredible. I didn't think it was possible, but we still have to get through that process. So this conversation, I know it's a counting conversation and we can take all the time we want. But we can't do it in respect to what's happening with the Attica brands. And so that's why I'm just proposing, let's split. You know, let's figure it out on accounting level and let Attica continue. But for discussion.
Well, I think it has to be restated that Wega existed before the county coming gave you and asked you to expand. Economic development across the county and you did everything the county asked you to do, you expanded your boards and other things. We completely changed the overall project. We completely changed the board to represent the county. Democrats.
Yeah, so the, the county came to you and asked you to expand. Yeah, and, and what's changed is, you know, obviously we can strike a new contract and do it uh again if you want. But what's changed is right now we have a canceled contract and we have no funding. And so we're trying to figure out how do we resolve that associated with our Attica connection that is ongoing, right?
Yeah, you say you have a canceled contract, or contract extended. Our, our contract extended to June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Did you receive a letter that?
Yeah, they voted and I received an email from ten of their. I practice against them.
I guess I didn't know that.
I remember when we first talked about. We, we all said we needed economic development. And the conversation at the time before um Rod came into our. Periphery. That we knew we needed economic development. We talked about hiring an economic development person. We talked about what the cost would be to do that. And then um Rod came into a meeting. And we discussed um the situation and the possibility of Rod working with this for economic development. And that's how that began. Um I want Attica to get their project done. Um I drive through that town. I grew up in that town. Um I live just outside of that town and. I've seen that town be prosperous when I grew up. Um downtown was full, full of stores. Um and to watch what has happened over the course of the years and that all goes to the economic climate. And they have done tremendous amount of work to remove the buildings that were. Beyond repair. Um and I know everybody says. Our town looks awful now because there's nothing there. I would rather look at what I'm looking at with nothing there than look at what it was. It was depressing. This is hopeful. To see an empty lot. You're, it's easier to sell an empty lot so that person can look at that vision, what they want for that lot. As to look at a building that's sitting there and thinking. Oh my gosh, we gotta take a hundred thousand dollars to take this building down and we have to include that in our investment. Now they can look at it and see. A vision. Do I like that it has to sit empty for five years? Absolutely not, but that's just part of the grant money stipulations. Perfect. Now's when you, now's when you need to start trying to find somebody because it's probably going to take two years to get something drawn up for them. So I want Attica's project to be completed. Um I just don't know what our role plays in that as a county. If we don't um. When it continue with Wega, does their project still continue? Do they still get those funds or is it funds based off of our participation? I don't know.
I did verify it's not late. So I asked the IVC and they said, no, it's an Attica centered project. They were.
But then I think we've got a lot of money invested and do we walk away from that?
Are there board member comments from outside of Attica? How it's been getting the county and how it's going or you know, it's that way.
So I'm the vice president. My name is Jason Bruce. Um I would like to hear whether the council, I mean, I heard Aaron say he's interested to get other commissioners involved. We can get a contract reinstated. And I think we're all vested together. We're members of the rest, like hummus is important to us. All of us can move on tomorrow and we will all be fine. This is all we talk about all the time. Uh life will move on and you know, we just find we're all successful business owners. And um but we are, the funny thing is, is none of us had the time to do this and we're still doing it and we're invested and we've been in it a year and a half. All of us feel that way. The confidence is there, we, you know, and I think we want to work with the county. So I would like to hear from. You know, we'll all be individually, but who is interested because I think. I will be interested in getting this contract re-signed and we have funding, we'll be good for a long while while we figure it out. You know, as far as uh, I'm gonna keep this moving. I'm invested as well. I want to see Attica. Very high, but this project is going to be beautiful. I've been at almost everything as well. So um that's my two cents. I love you here. Like I said, what do you guys think?
Well, first, I mean, my thought of it, I mean, at the beginning, I was supportive. I think we need economic development. I did not think we could afford to pay somebody that had the knowledge and the thought group was, was best. Um where my misunderstanding or support maybe stopped and from citizens, I think where the support stopped is. That. They went out and got these grants and you know, it's county money, so to speak, coming from Ready Two and large dollars. But then at that point, the county had no say on kind of how that money got distributed, what projects. It was just the board and furthering that, you know, we have a council member and a commissioner on the board, but. They don't have any voting rights, correct? So it was, it was hard at that point to say that, you know, this is a county deal, supported by the county, but then they can do whatever they want with the. County ready funds, large grants and. When we're trying to do these projects and do other things, that's, that gets really hard that we have no say whatsoever. So I think that's where the, the support or misunderstanding maybe runs into a hurry clock or has. That's my opinion.
I'm Attica, so that's why I think, no, yeah, I'm in. So I've been the treasurer now for the last uh. How long? Three years. Um so, so I, I gotta move, I, I'm gonna move to the beginning. No, my passion is to make sure that Fountain County is successful. Obviously, as the state representative for twelve years, my passion was that also for the region. No. Putting my name down and working this hard this many years, trying to make sure that the dollars are spent wisely. Making sure that we're accountable for every penny is been my task. And making sure that we get every opportunity to go after grants. I mean, we are at the cusp of a really big deal and yes, it's in Attica. I mean, it's, it's what we were fully committed to. And the city has made tremendous investments. And uh my concern is that there will be a sense of jeopardy because of this inner fighting. And because the public has severe issues with, with the, with our organization called Wega. I mean, how do we repair that? How do we fix that so quickly? I, I sense that people want more government control over it. Uh you know, more of a public-private scenario. I get that. Um I can tell you that the investment the county has made, payouts and the years of investment that the city has made in Attica. It's just the truth. Uh the grants that we have at, at this point, I mean, we could start listing them all and say that Wega is nothing, Aaron. Uh with the money that the county has given, it's, it's very erroneous. I don't know why you would say that. Um I mean, it's, you can't, you can't discount the dollars that we have brought in via these grants. And the time and effort that's been put into these plans and these, these structures. No, I want to see the county have economic development. I want to see Attica's projects being incredibly successful because I know that that helps the entire county. Uh Attica actually helps the entire region. And what I don't want to see is a blowback. I want to make sure that we can successfully do it all. And uh you know, this inner fighting is not helping. Now let me deal with the inner fighting between the commissioners and the council, between contracts and the county not funding it. Um you know, obviously, I think you're at this point trying to work on that. The next could. I want, want to see it as more of a quick piece of work we had, but bottom line, we're not in the budget. We don't have the funding from the county right now. Are you ready to go through an additional appropriation process to fund uh Wega in the public? I mean, after the way we've been laying basis in, in Facebook, I mean, and we have Facebook and other. Social media ones, it's someone wanting to get that off. Um so, I mean, you gotta think about that. Do you really, do you really want to do that? You know, I want to see it be healthy. And I'm trying to figure out how do we navigate into a healthy structure. You know, my thought processes, you know, somehow, you know, Wega helps the county find a health structure that works. That works, you know, just we work through, I plead with the commissioners and the council. Get the, to get the additional dollars to work for the county, um to have their representation uh. When these ready grants are available, I don't know if the state's got a fund anymore because we're gonna have really a tight, uh tight revenue forecast coming up. But you know, the future is rural development. Our current governor is very supportive of rural, rural growth. And trying to figure out how to get more dollars into the rural areas. He's a rural guy, which is pretty cool. So we will have more opportunities and it's just navigating the negativity and getting to a healthy structure. That's what we're trying to do here. So my two cents, good.
Sure, I apologize if I wasn't saying I didn't support Wega in Attica. I think that's a no brainer. I think we did in Attica and that's why I was asking for comments from others now, but. Um I'm dismissing Attica. I want to see Attica.
Business for Attica.
No, I apologize.
And so we know, I understand our financial position and the Atticus, the hoops they've gone through to figure this out and to get that downtown. And yeah, that was, God, that blight was awful. And yeah, people hated buildings coming down. Okay, you always get that. But reality is we're at the cusp of doing something really great. And, and we, and we have to follow through and make sure that this really great opportunity is not squashed because of inner fighting. And, and creating a healthy atmosphere for economic development in Fountain County that probably has a different name. That might be sensitive.
I put my two cents in. Great, great mayor Covington. I'm all for Attica. I'm all for Covington naturally. Rod said when he started this, I don't have to do anything with Covington because I do Covington, so he didn't have to. But we got Petersburg, Hillsborough, Pingman, Mulatt, Newtown. We have other areas, Wallace. So as of right now, and I'm, I'm all for, for Jeff. For getting his funding, for whoever's landing uh one point seven million of ready funds if it's, if it's approved. In, in Attica. Which brings Attica's total to about eight million dollars. If, if my second project, I have seven hundred and fifty thousand. If my second project gets approved, it'd be another eight hundred thousand. So it's about one point six million for Covington. And eight million for Attica. So it's nothing for anybody else. So you know, the Lilly grant was for blight. Right, Rod? And, and architect or architecture, the arts. Petersburg has blight. They need some help.
Well, so if I could speak to that, uh we did put Petersburg up for that blight grant and IVC said no. And then we included Petersburg and Hillsborough in another effort with GLC. Um and then I just said, said, said no. And then I tried to put Hillsborough because they're really struggling to find some money for the sidewalks and so on. I tried to put them in the Attica proposal and the IVC said no. So the challenge is every grant's different, but that particular grant with the IVC, they run internal um economic impact studies. And if they're not getting the numbers they want and they've got someone else ahead of them that can show a bigger return, they just cut them out. And so that's just their process. Every grant has its process. So that's why we did try and we're still trying. But um I guess the point I would add to this as well is you're right. You're absolutely right that the rest of this county needs help and, and investment. It's going to take time. It's going to take a tremendous amount of work and it's going to take commitment from the community. So we've got to enter into this conversation with everyone participating. And right now, we don't have it and they're not willing to do it with Wega. I mean, that's what we have found is that uh they're just not willing to. Now, I will say Hillsborough. I mean, that's what we have found is that uh they're just not willing to, now I will say Hillsborough. Uh has been awesome uh and uh we've just not been able to solve that for them. Um but you know, Petersburg just was not interested at some point um.
I think Petersburg wasn't interested in. The housing development.
That we put in Attica.
Yeah, 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 they were interested in that. And you know, they were interested in single-family homes, which is basically what we're doing. But I don't, it is easy at this point, I don't think the county should fund. Just Attica for economic development. Either gonna fund the whole county or you know. Or nothing, nothing against Larry for Attica. You know, because they need the help, that's for sure, go up there and look around.
Well, Attica's gone out of our way to help ourselves.
Right.
It's been pointed out, you put some money into this. And for somebody to say that money should be divided amongst the county equally. For people that haven't put up money upfront like Attica has, it's just wrong.
You've gotta help yourself.
Well, I don't think we can enter into contracts and keep backing out. That doesn't my position right now, it hurts here regardless of whether it's Wega or anybody else. Uh we had a contract to to June thirty twenty twenty six. Uh with Wega, that should have been offered.
What was he gonna pay him?
Well, that's what you have, that's what you have to come up with.
It's already, it's already been canceled legally and signed and everything, so at this point.
Well, I say we have to be actually careful from now on.
Yeah.
Entering into contracts. That we made. That we can't fill.
For the last year, I've heard nothing but negative things from this courthouse and Facebook. And everybody else and anybody else, wiggle wiggle wiggle, bad, 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 bad information is what it was. They have done nothing. But positive things for this entire county, they have reached out to other small places. If they chose not to work with them, fine and dandy, but their main focus. And Rod has never been, never hidden this. Attica started years ago, obviously their project's gonna roll a lot quicker than anything in Covington or Petersburg or Kingman or or whatever. So right now. Like Roger, they're at jeopardy of losing six million dollars for the city of Attica with all this terminal infighting. And if that happens. I mean, if I'm on the, if I'm a board member of the city of Attica or whatever. I won't be filing some lawsuits. So. You bought lose six million dollars for the town, so.
I have a question. Director, who would the commissioner have voted to cancel this?
Shoemaker and Hardy. All right.
Bill, why don't you stand up, why don't, you're the president, okay, why don't you, why don't you explain what you like from the county, if anything?
Yeah, you know, for me, a- as a president, and again, just goes to personal opinion, right? We have a board that will make that decision as the after discussion. But you know, certainly I would like to see. Um. Wega, uh you know, I just don't see. How we would be um. The the comments and the. Uh the comments I heard personally after the December twenty seventh meeting. Um how we. Will be effective in the county, in the rural areas, right, with our. And so I don't know um how that, how we could as a Wega organization be effective in the county, right? Uh I would like to see the county, that we work with the county to develop a new. Organization, whether it be public-private, private. Um or public or just, you know, based out of the county, right? I I think it's better if you have a public-private together because you can go after some of the grants and stuff better, but uh. Uh I think, Aaron, that's the way I would, Commissioner Bridge, I would think that's the way I would. Like to see a structure that the the county uh with the with our input and. You know, just as a consultant type work is work in there and develop a, an organization to help. Not uh in focus on more of the rural area and have. Uh maybe a higher leader with some rural that understands rural area, knows the people. Uh whether it be local or uh you know, somebody else and then have a board from the local area. Along with the county representative on that and drive forward, that that'd be my. And then have we go back to focus on these three projects that sort of take place in Attica. And and that's my personal opinion, um you know, as president of the board, the board will discuss this and. Decide what we want to do and I'll certainly support that and. Execute that, you know, I'll have, we'll have that discussion internally and I'm sure we'll go ahead and give it to the board to do like that that happens and. But personally, this is how I would see, I would like to see it.
The other thing I would add if I may is, the first time that we did this, we didn't try and force anything. But we did, right? There were parts of the community that were not really supportive. Uh and it didn't work for that reason, so it would help the community as a whole to have a public discourse about what they want. You know, rather than just forcing, we get back on them, let's. Open the dialogue so that we can discuss what we want and how we wanna structure it. If they want full-on control, then it's gotta be under the government, right? Uh it it is, it does hamper your ability to go after certain grants, but you can do it that way. Um but I I gotta say. I feel like I've worked my tail off and you may not agree with that, but I'm the target. Of a lot of the anxiety and I'm tired, right? And I know as elected official, you get it all the time, it's possible, we need to find a better way. You know, we need to start having conversations and and open the dialogue so that everybody feels comfortable with where we're going. But it's just.
Aaron, I want to add one thing. I'm, if you don't know, I'm fairly new to the area, right? I I'm a new, there's no doubt, I've only been here five years, right? And so I don't have the history of a lot of you guys have been here fifty, sixty, seventy years, generational, right? And the um I came from a a small town in Texas. And I was president of the economic development board there and I'm city council. They had a public-private. Type of of board, it ran, it was a. A corporation under Texas law that ran uh that reported to the city, had city like officials on it and it also had to. And it worked very well and it works very well in Texas that way. They've been very profitable by the two growths, but you know, I think that combination is absolutely the best way to go. And and I've had dealing with it in the past and it's worked both.
That's what I'm trying to comprehend all this being said and. I mean, there's a lot of terms that, you know, I I know a few great words if you'd like to hear it. Yes, I I I don't understand most of what's being said, I'll say. Uh there's a couple of things that I. Am a little bit familiar with. Is it IDDC?
Yeah, Indian Economic Development Corporation.
Okay, so um. That's public-private, right?
It is, yeah.
So I'd like to understand. My of my understanding of IDDC is that they have totally private meetings. And this is according to. Togertita in a meeting, right, that uh and it doesn't happen in law yet. IDDC has totally private, you can't. You you can't audit them, you can't get their minutes, you can't, you don't understand what they're. You you can't know where they're going.
No transparency.
I'm sorry.
No transparency there.
That's the point. That's the point. Um and the, it was through IDDC that they got the. Uh lead, I'm sorry, lead water visitor, correct? That was the, that was what the meeting was about, okay? And. They're pushing that. Issue, lead project. Without, it would seem, without public input. It happened, it. With with. They did a uh and 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 this may be getting off the subject maybe a little bit, but it it seems like. A little bit of understanding underneath this is that. That public-private issue, which you say worked, um I I don't see it working in the lead project.
Well, they are structured, yeah, they're structured a little bit differently, you can have open meetings with a public-private.
Okay, it's the board structure, it's the, I'm sorry, I jumped in, it's the board structure. And the governor is in control of that board, so it's it's really, it's it's in code and how it's created, how it's controlled. Um there's discussion in session, of course, to change that and we'll hear a lot about that.
All right, so so this means, so if we, if we goes for whatever.
Well, we can't change our structure, that's part of the problem.
Okay.
Is we can't accommodate these needs, uh so that's why we're recommending, let's do something new in the form you wanted.
Okay, so.
Why can't you change your structure, are you unwilling or?
No, you can't because of you. So my my issue is that it would be. With the lead project. If if we're gonna talk about structuring, restructuring. Then with the lead project, they have the, which if you're not familiar with it, it's the one that. Uh they're putting in the chip planet and boom and.
It's it's happening, there's nothing, there's nothing cast as on wood, there's no.
I'm sorry.
They they don't have a company, I I know we'd like to think they're different, but they're never, there's no, there is no company that's that's. Signed the deal, they're going to London.
Other than, other than.
Other than with this.
Lily is long.
And Lily's already got them, I don't think I've seen one so hot.
Okay, so they've they are trying to bring the the. Development into that area that then would. After get all the details of moving pipeline water from Lafayette area to the Bloom leveling area. Um and people dwelled, ran dry with the uh. Just the tests, I'm a few.
So I think what you're saying is.
So my issue is, if it if it is that this happens with. A public-private, which you.
I mean, we're not gonna do that.
Exactly.
No, I I guess so, this will be, this will be my reiteration to you.
So my issue is that if we're gonna, if we can, we want to, if we, if it's gonna go public-private, be sure that it has. Public accessibility, transparency, or it's in it, if it if it has.
We're already public-private, right?
No, no, we're public-private.
Okay.
Okay, so so if it has the choice. Of public-private, you also have choice between more pub-private or more public.
That is true.
If it's.
When you set up the organization and you file uh for a five oh one, that would be a C six actually.
Okay.
Um so if you file for a C six, then you can set that organization up the way you want and once you file it's set.
Which other videos in the western Indiana area do as well? I don't think there's anything at all with our structure, what we could have done is we could have been more public, we do not, does not. There are things that we discuss in these meetings that cannot get out, which we all agree on. But we could have done a much better job of meeting with the public and uh our government and being transparent on the things that we were trying to do, which we did not do. Which is why the board is now making changes in leadership moving forward, we're trying to rectify this. And that's me speaking as the PD.
So you're saying you could possibly be more transparent even the way.
We cannot possibly, we could absolutely be more.
Well, we can't do what he's talking about. We can't, uh it's a private non-problem.
Yeah, you can't.
And so you can have public meetings to talk about issues, but you can't bring them into a board meeting.
To bring the public along, but to a board meeting, because there are members discussed, bids can't get out, there are things that that you that. That cannot, Rod is absolutely correct there, but we can have public meetings that are not official board meetings, discuss what. Wega is doing and what we're accomplishing and we have never done it.
Well, we have done it, uh we actually needed to be more.
And I'll get back to the public private, you can have, you know, the board meeting, the public private. Have the public at the board meeting and when you start going into. Uh discussions that are sensitive, you go into exec session, people, you can, that happens all the time.
It's no different than what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, that happens too, right? So yeah, if uh this commissioner decided they're gonna do about a personal issue, they'll go for legal issue, they'll go in executive section, everybody else like, right? And so that happens all the time, so we have that ability with the public privately and it it is a lot more. And it's statutory that you have to have open meetings, you have to post their agenda, people get notifications and it's a lot.
Yeah, it's just different. So our point is, let's fix it, but there's no time. With what's happening in Attica, we're going to jeopardize the projects in Attica and the grants if we don't. Make a change. And right now, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to go work on the business incubator, let's let uh the group hire another economic developer. Set up a new organization and just run, you know.
Robert, I see, where I have a problem with that is is the county's invested in your incubator and that's where you went, got the grants from for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct, but it's still a county product.
No, you're you're talking about creating a whole new arm. And that arm is going to be controlled and start a new one, so essentially, we're gonna start over as a county, correct?
No, you're not.
Well, you're you're willing to give us money back, that's what you said, but that, no, that's exactly what I mean, we're gonna start over as a county and you're gonna walk with seven fifty? I'm not saying, I'm gonna say.
We're gonna walk away.
Let me clarify a lot of points there because it's not accurate.
Let's, no, let's clarify one.
We have three hundred seventy seven.
You came to the county after money, the county gives five hundred thousand dollars for the shed that is supposed to be the Wega, that is supposed to be the business incubator, period.
Correct, now, let me, let me clarify that, it's ARCA dollars that was given for free. That you attributed to the business incubator, which we are executing on.
Free is a terrible word, that was county money, that's taxpayers' money that was given to Wega to do economic development for the county, period.
Which was what ARCA was for.
Okay, we could have spent a lot of things, we didn't have to.
No, you couldn't, not at the time, you had to spend it on economic development efforts.
Okay, well, we can argue that, we will certainly, the facts are, Larry, the facts are, we're seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. To to that building, to do economic building, economic development for the county, period.
Let me clarify our numbers for everybody, it's five hundred thousand dollars, the ARCA dollars that go towards the building, we've spent half of that and we're continuing to spend.
But you still have, we we've we've given you that money, that money's there.
Correct, um and then you signed a contract for seven hundred and fifty for a full three-year period, we've only gone through a year and a half. So three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars had been paid out for consulting services, we kept some of that so that we can continue to work during this time period. And um that money uh. Achieved ten point seven million dollars in grants, new grants from the county.
And I'm not arguing that, but you're wanting us to step away from that, you use county funds to get those grants and now you want us to walk away.
No, they're not your money, that money went to individual projects, like ready to didn't go through the county, by the way, did not go through the county. It went directly from the IDC to the end-user project. And so that's still, there's nothing you're giving it at all.
And and Eric, I want to say, you know, the money invested, those projects are not adding, you know, they're the located Attica, if they're counting that.
Oh, I, Larry and I had a personal.
Help the county, so that money's funded, so it's not walking away from that, that is still.
You're not having one single.
Still have.
Nothing.
Still have, you know, investment in the building and.
I agree.
And that's, that is all about the county, you know, the business, the market is in Attica, which is in Fountain County, which will help the county, it'll help the tax base of the county. So we're not walking away from the county, right? It is, it is not money.
I believe you are, and we can talk.
And I I think I'll disagree the whole day.
And that's fine, that's fine, however, you're wanting to split up the board and moving in a different direction. And create a new wing that's gonna do economic development.
No, well, let me clarify my recommendation. We have a business incubator that's ongoing, it's not a one-time project, right? So it's a training facility, an institute, and an ongoing marketing. That organization needs to be structured completely differently in order to facilitate that need. It's like running a business, right, or, or a, a school, so that's what we're hoping to do with Wega. Is to go do that, because it's very different, and it needs different attention. And then the economic development portion would come, come from the, uh, county's organization that would serve Attica, Covington, Petersburg, et cetera. So, we're not, we're not doing a separate economic development of ours.
So now, now, the, 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 the money that we spent for the business incubator is not for economic development, that's what you're saying.
It is economic development, but the org, the product runs differently. You cannot hire a traditional economic developer within the industry to run the business incubator and market, it's a different product. And so it's still an economic development product, but no one is doing this. It, it's gonna take specific expertise, and we're gonna have to hire different people to pull that off.
Yeah, and then I'll just again, you know, my, my suggestion is Bill's suggestion. The board has to vote, and Jason be, have a completely different idea, right, have a completely different, Tom and Gary. All these guys, you know, the board has to come in and, and share that before, you know. So the, saying, here me saying this, isn't the league of board saying this, this is Bill Glass, as, uh, the president of board, this is my opinion. And that's a board discussion that we're gonna have to have, and. And if they wanted to hear what the county thoughts are, first, before we have that discussion. Let me bear clear, as me personally, I'm not a top ten, get out of here more than. I'm for sticking with Wega, the new economic development, the brand has been there, we're. In quite a bit of money, so. I'm saying that as me as one commissioner. Or anyone on the council, but that's my personal.
Brandon Ricketts, I'm a voting member on Wega, um, I'm here to describe here out of the council. Trying to learn how I'm gonna vote, basically. None of this really matters if Wega's not funded, so I would like to know, we got a fan on that. Uh, what Rod just said kind of sparked a little interest in me is that. You know, Wega is the leader of the county, uh, I think Wega has done a lot of good things, but. But Rod just said it made me think, that's insane, and I agree with Rod, like, running the incubator is not economic development. Uh, market's not economic development. I have no interest as a economic development board member. To run those things, I have time for a meeting a month and a few phone calls, that's about it. But Rod just said also that Wega is going to be restructured. Run those through Attica. Now, I'm just wondering. Does it make more sense to keep Wega at a county level and restructure something for Attica?
It would accept that the land and the grants are in Wega's name.
So is it something that? As the, if, if you guys split off to Attica, we stayed with the county, I mean, is that something we could negotiate and then contract? Say, hey, like, we don't wanna bail on Attica, it's Wega board, we all speak. I don't want to see Attica fail, it is part of our county, you know, I mean, we came from Attica originally. Um, it is improvements on the town. I think Wega's a board that wants to see that, we're not trying to take anything from Attica, I know you guys spent a ton of money. You guys created organizations, as Rod said. That doesn't need restructured to do what you guys are trying to do. So if it is economic development, it was set up as economic development, correct?
Yeah, with the focus of the incubator, um, so I think your valid point, absolutely. Uh, should be considered, the challenge is that within a month.
I agree, and that's what I'm saying, is there a way to move forward where? Again, Rod said it needs restructured, be Attica's Attica. Take some seed money, start a new organization, we figure out how to coexist for six months until this money does or does not come in.
It's reversible money in those cases, so it's a longer time period, now, I mean. We understand what I mean when I say reversible.
But if we're making that commitment to Attica, which I think, oh, it's what Bill was said, or I've heard him say, maybe it's a lot.
Yeah, I understand, from the board's question, and I would like to hear the, the council and commissioners, like, again, it's kind of unavoidable, we haven't funded. Right, so. We're gonna go, you guys say, is it possible, is there money available, do we have to re, refund, Sharon keeps saying. I don't know, that's, that's for you guys to decide, and I'd like to hear.
I think well that. I think, uh. The council, Rod, Russ taking some dance. Lot of. And the council was concerned about that. How we get out there with him. Doing our, doing our, forcing what we want. He said so much, so much, so much, so many hits along before we get, that. We could, I, I think I'm speaking for the rest of the council, we just, we didn't want to find it. About him in that position, with him in that position, that's, that's exactly what it was.
And I'm, I'm not aware of what I'm allowed and not allowed to say, it's like a voice get reminded on Wega board, I can get some. But as a Wega board, you know, we heard the concerns of the county, the commissioners, the council, the, and, and it is, I think. Blown way out of proportion on Facebook. Um, you know, the. Board was divided on. How to move forward, because we were being told by a lot of people that. You know, they didn't think we could move forward with Rod. That's neither here nor there, um. But we took action as a board to give Rod his ninety days. And at the end of those ninety days, our hope was. Rod could mend some of those relationships and. Kill it in those ninety days, do a, a great job, and at the end of those ninety days, our decision was to take resumes and. If Rod wants to throw his name back in the hat and, and. Possibly get rehired with his experience. There was not anybody in the board that was going to look back at Rod's resume either. So as a board, we did take an action to continue on Wega. And, but we did leave that loophole of, hey, we'll see what else is out there, we'll see if there are other. Qualified people, there are some people in the board that, that they think Rod is the only one, but personally, I don't know. I, I have zero clue, you don't know until you see what else is out there. They might be right, Rod might be going on a good job, but until you take those resumes, you don't know.
And I can say on a county level, that was the right move, I, I don't disagree. But on, on a city level, it's not the right move. Because we're in the middle of landing grants that. I'm in the middle of doing, and so that is the challenge, it's the rub between the city contract and the county contract. And at the moment, I would just prefer, I know you're not gonna go to make a decision, but I would just prefer that. We have a conversation about splitting the effort. Because I, we thought about it long and hard, I can't figure out how to do it. But is it worse, is it worse than.
No, we're just restructuring, uh, the. Essentially restructuring the board with the chance to employ people with expertise, to run that project, that's what I'm gonna be saying.
More like you're from the other board meeting or the board numbers, like, I'm getting the same vibe here, I'm just getting that. You know, Wega wants to be supported by the county and do good work in the county, and Wega kind of wants to push the county out. For whatever reason, they wanna make something easier, that concerns me, I, I do feel like we're gonna have to start over, I feel. There's a different vibe coming from different board members and.
Before we shift, can somebody direct me where the prohibition is on the public attending Wega meetings? Everybody said, well, public can't attend these meetings, and I, I missed where that was at.
Uh, in the Wega bylaws.
That can be amended for whatever reason.
Right.
Why can't they, it is.
Cause we're private.
And you can't amend the bylaws on this?
We can't bring, um. Bring the company into this meeting. We can have separate meetings, separate conversations, uh, starting to be working.
We can, but according to, I mean, we asked this through the attorney, and she said, because of our corporate structure. Time, way it was designed, uh, when we filed all our corporate structure, it was something that we can change at first, so. We certainly can have separate meetings, but not within the board meetings. That's how it was explained, I'm not an attorney.
I spent a lot of time and effort and money on my law degree, and I still, I mean, I don't know this, we didn't go over this, but it just seems very odd to me that a board. Comprising of eight members who own it, that, that is way that can stay board members, can't say, nah, people are gonna come here, like, who's. Who's looking over their shoulder?
But then you're actually moving forward toward a best.
For the bylaws.
For the bylaws, or for the.
That can't be amended supposedly.
Through the structure of corporate structure, when we set up, we filed, so. That, that was important to.
Sure, sure, did you say, did you follow your, uh, what you're saying?
I just feel like. There are certain people on Wega that wanna push the county out. They want.
Well, I, I can clarify that, I don't think I.
We have, like Aaron said, too much invested to just.
Well, let me.
There seems to be underlightations and I'm concerned.
Yeah, and I don't wanna talk specifically about. How the board is working. But we have. Members outside of Attica. That are new to the board, associated with this contract. We have members inside of Attica that have been on the board from the beginning. That's the divide. And the people that are in. Uh, Attica and have worked and invested in this project so long. Are paintings. That we're gonna do similarly. That's the divide. And so that's why I say this divide.
First, that all say they support Attica.
No, when, the word all is not the right word, we have a divide. And so that's the issue, we, we have, we have an organization that was built in Attica. And worked on Attica for quite a while, and then at your request, we changed it to be a county-wide product, but. It's, the cultures are not matching, and at this element, we.
Yeah.
The Wega board is.
So Bill, so. And, and like I said, he's laughing and putting out ninety days, or he's been given ninety days, what was the vote to give him ninety days? We're talking about divide, we can, we can answer divide right now, what's her vote? What was the vote to give him his ninety days?
You know, that's a. It's really not private, it was a vote to give Rod. Ninety days note, right, so, I'm gonna go to the specific voter power went down, that's. We're a private organization, and that's a private vote, and it's not. Yeah, so I'm not gonna go into that.
I, I give a second.
And, and I appreciate the question. But, um. And we will have that discussion.
I, I don't understand the point of that question.
Well, for a guy with a hearing problem, could we please take one at a time?
The question was, you're, you were preaching that there's a divide on Wega's council, yet you've got. A ninety days notice for your job. Yeah, so was it a four to three, was it?
Well, obviously, it was, I mean.
Well, but you were sitting here arguing that we have a divide. And they're sitting there saying there is.
I actually, I actually didn't ever say that. I didn't say that, I actually talked about the project.
So the, the easiest way to figure out if there's a divide is just.
It's so short.
And Eric, we'll have that discussion on Thursday, it could be seven to one, you know, and then, then I, I'd be four to three. It doesn't matter, as long as the majority is, well. Board will make the decision, that's the decision, right?
I think the conversation is about how can we move forward.
And what does the council and the cap.
Well, I think the, what herein lies the problem is, when you take a private. Entity. And you work with a public taxpayer-funded entity. And there is no transparency from day one, and we have, we are held accountable. To everyone that resides in this county, whether it be in this room or out the grocery store. And if we cannot answer their question, because you are a private organization. Now, how would you like to be in that position? And I can't, I cannot answer, then, where'd that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars go? Why did you give them that money? You know, I have to be able to answer that question as do. All of the other public officials in here, and so this herein lies the problem, and how do we move forward from that? I don't know.
The key. Rod just explained. Rod just, Rod just explained that, where the money's at. That's a two-second conversation. And you're right, Kelly. We need to get economic development under the county, period, and be done.
Now, I think the key word you said is transparency, because clearly, as Jason said. You can have a private organization, still be very transparent, they chose it not to, that's.
I, I think, I think there would.
You can have a public organization, like zoning board meetings, and not have transparency, because nothing was ever announced with that, when. The reason we got all these problems for the last four years is because there wasn't transparency, out there for the public or private. You gotta be transparent, that's the problem.
I don't think anyone, I don't see for sure, I don't think any of us all know. That we need to do a better. Boundaries for skin created. Where we are. Now, I don't disagree with a lot of the corporations. I don't, I can take all the ladies, I'm sure that he wants to, but. We're just out of moment, we're, we're going to this. Six million dollars in grants, and I, for me, it's worked out for six years, it's unacceptable.
But wait a minute, did you, I asked the question. Would those grants be in jeopardy if the county did not move forward with their partnership with Wega, and you said, no.
Correct, they're not in jeopardy that way, they are in jeopardy if we keep fighting. That's the point of making.
Yeah, so. Uh, I, I gotta disagree, I think that commissioners, the funding media, all there was six million dollars upon the table. Very valuable to the I's. It is, um. I think that was done hastily by commissioners on their way out, I did not appreciate it as taxpayer. Uh, was supposed to go to a meeting that I attended, and. Yeah, the taxpayer, I can agree with it. I do feel like, again, as I, I do think Wega. Could meet some division between county and Attica, again, I am here now to get. All your expert people on. How I should vote, you know, how are we gonna do this, how can we divide things, what if we divide things, where does the money go? Does the money, does money just go to Attica? That, I don't want that to happen with the county, you know, I'm representing the county and Covington. So I can't just say, hey, Attica, take six million. Like, you know, we all better kind of bring our heads together here, figure it out.
Well, the, the money's project-specific, so we don't get a choice.
So, I guess my question is. Who is patient right now? Like, who's, who's patient, like, you're solid, because you're the only paid member, right?
Right.
So is that a patient?
No, it comes through the county. And that will be done, the appropriate to.
So, it's, so, if we split. If, if we split, we still have six million dollars, you're not at county level, so now we're, we're gonna pay.
Well.
Attica's paying the Wega two hundred thousand dollars, three-year project.
So, but it's project-specific.
And what they do with that money internally, I don't.
So where I'm, so where I'm confused. Is, who is paying Rod when we split at county level? Well, I don't have, it's either coming out of six million. Or it's coming out of Attica, or wrong, I don't have a contract. I'm genuinely asking, I'm not.
Right, so one, one thought we've had, and it's just behind the wheel, there's no doubt, but one thought we've had is that we can, uh, ask. Uh, during the lured process, to receive some project management. Uh, and then we'll have to gear up and raise money, that's just gonna be part of the process.
I mean, obviously. In my opinion, Aaron, Bill, and Rod, like. You got some sort of plan for administration, administrative, was that.
So, because we saved, no, we kind of spent all the money, so we have some time to vote, I mean, we also have the ability. To, uh, budget some of that.
With the grants. So, we, I mean, I may be working for free for a while, that's why, I don't necessarily ask.
Brandon, and the meeting by the commissioners was not hastily done, we didn't know that they. Brandon, and the meeting by the commissioners was not hastily done. We didn't know that they wasn't funded. No, no, no. We did not know that it was not funded until the last minute. Therefore, we had no, we had no way to keep a contract, we had no money to pay them. And that's exactly what's that has nothing to do with Brenda Hardy leaving or anything else. Yeah, she's president of the commission. Okay, I'm just telling you, that's not fair.
Okay, I appreciate your, your. I will say, if, if a taxpayer. And, and if he's on, if he's on board, it, it seemed like it was done pretty hastily, and I personally. We were not approached to the board that you guys didn't please at all. At least I was. On my dinner, or shared, I don't know. All right, Larry. Question, I, I'm hearing. People fifteen to twenty-five.
That's my last day.
On the contract was yes.
Yeah, my first week contract.
Okay, but, yeah, at the same time. If I understand Tim, the, the. It was given one year notice for Vega, correct? So continue to pay them dollars twenty-five.
They can, they can take action against us if they want to try to get the money, but they're not going to. Yeah, exactly. I'm just pointing that out here.
The, the, what was passed that day was that.
We're giving them one year notice.
One year notice with continuing support, no?
We'll give them the one year notice.
Legally, yes, but they didn't do it. So they didn't budget, is the point. Got it, okay. So I, I missed that in the. In meeting, and then what followed, I guess, right? All right, so, so what happened? Who, who did not, um.
County council. County council.
The council did not put the budget line down to pay for weekend next year. So, no different than earlier today, we appropriated twelve thousand and five hundred additional funds for the highway. We did that because that twelve thousand five hundred was not originally getting lined. So could we still throughout this year appropriate on the day we got? Yes, we just, you know, appropriation, because it wasn't in the original budget. So I guess Vega has a very interesting structure of what they can change, but it. It seems to me if we just stay as a county supported economic developer arm, then the smart thing would be to. Within Vega, make a committee or sub. Committee that focuses on Attica, and then hopefully in the future have a committee that focuses on Petersburg and different areas as these projects come about. Like, maybe we could have do that, but any other organization, I mean, that's a five oh one C three. They're bored, but then they have different committees that focus on certain areas and projects. So why wouldn't you do that in Attica and still be able to support families a whole lot?
We can create committees, sure. The, the challenge is, uh, lost, you know, like they lost the hundreds. You know, I am the person, unfortunately, that created the great structure and the big data and marketing. It was based on forty years in the retail business, right? And so, uh, they are worried based on that. They're not handing that to anyone else in the state. And we did win four of the very first award on, from the. And so I need to be in that conversation in order for it to happen. And recently, uh, I was dismissed because people in the county were upset about how it was going to the county. So once again, we have this dichotomy about, you know, what's happening in Attica versus what's happening in the county. And like I said, I don't disagree with the county. Uh, dismissed, I don't, because it didn't work, and it's not worth being, and putting someone else in there might make a lot of sense. But we're in this pickle right now, where we could lose our efforts in Attica. And so we're just trying to thread that and solve it. I agree with you, we can't make the names, we can't add additional structure. Uh, I feel blindsided by this COVID, and so I'm not sure, I'm excited about that, but, um, we'll. Continue that conversation.
I think if you're going to continue to get funds from the county and from the city of Attica, then you need to have public. Meetings, and it doesn't have to be a board meeting, I understand the structure, that stuff is private, but. When you're dealing with taxpayer funds, you have to have a public meeting. I don't care if it's once every three months, once every week, once a month, it has to be done. Because our necks, we're sticking it out there, and it's our necks that are gonna be on the chopping block. So. If, if the council and the commissioners agree to move forward, there's definitely gonna be a renegotiation or a whole new contract. It's gonna be drawn up, and it, we're gonna, there's gonna be some terms in there that's not currently in there that reflects our conversations today.
Right, and I will say in Attica, we have had one public meetings, and things for a lot of them. We've had, we've been challenged to do that in the county, because, uh, Covington wanted to go a different direction. When we had some of the years where they didn't go up, you know, I mean, they're just silos in the county that we have not been able to break through. And maybe somebody else can do a better job. So, and the subcommittee hall, talking to Attica mayor here briefly. So Attica gives Vega two hundred thousand. We have the ability right now to negotiate the contract. I don't wanna lose money either, but we did a subcommittee for Attica guys. Attica's given two hundred thousand per year. What if Attica gave a lesser amount to the county? And then Attica wants to pay Rod, which sounds like, sounds like they would, out of their funds. They can pay Rod to be on the subcommittee for Attica, but at the county level, we can give him two hundred dollars right here at county level. You said that's, take that with my idea, okay, as long as you're not giving. Oh, two hundred thousand. They would be paying me directly now, now, now you're not dealing with the county. I understand what you're saying.
But the two hundred thousand is needed for the project, it's project.
No, I think that's a great idea.
The, the council and the commissioners are gonna have to have a conversation in regards to how we wanna proceed and move forward with, um, Vega. And then once we decide that, then we can have a conversation with Vega and come to some sort of terms that we agree.
I, I feel like there's some options for a win-win situation, if they're willing to work with us and willing to. To do some of those things. So at that point, I think, I, it was, you know, where is someone?
Mr. Shaw.
If it does a win-win situation with Vega, then it would have, it would seem. That the Viegas would have to, uh, restructure so that it can include the transparency.
I don't think they have to restructure. I don't think they have to restructure. I think it's a choice. They would have to make the choice to have a public.
Is Vega, obviously.
So you wouldn't have to.
Uh, she just walked out.
I don't know, they're private.
It's a whole lot private.
But they're not audited by the state board of account, or they are? Okay. I thought if, if you got a certain amount of funding from the government, you had to be honest.
Should, even, I know we, I know we do audits, but I don't think it's just.
It's not, okay.
It makes sense.
Yeah, I thought it was over two hundred thousand.
Well, because Erin would be the one that has.
She's our treasurer.
The reason is, you're paying the consultant fee, that's how we're getting paid, so we're not receiving public dollars.
What do you mean, public doll, you're getting public dollars through your office, isn't that the issue?
It's a, it's a contract, you have a consultant fee.
That's, well, that's still public funds, that's still public tax dollars. So whether we pay Roger or you or any other contractor, it's, it's public dollars that are funding that.
Right, if you don't audit Roger.
I don't think he's.
We have the ability, and actually, actually, he did just audit Roger last July or August. Because we had questions in regards to some of his invoices. Roger came in, he sat down with her and three or four of us, and we went through the entire. Invoices for the entire year. So we do have the ability to audit Roger. He is very participatory in that audit.
Sure, yeah, so as a treasurer, we need to do an audit every year, but it's not SBA, right?
Yeah, so we, well, we, no.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
No, we had to hire someone.
I was asking, the state board of the council.
Getting, I'm getting prepared to do that, because I needed a, a full year, because otherwise it was, I don't know, right? So we're in the process of, it was about six thousand dollars to do it.
For the project? Yeah, so, um, it's sequential, um, we've got two grants ready, two is for the business incubator, the building of the site of construction. Um, and we need to negotiate that by the end of February, which means I need to get in bits right now, so that we have real number. And then the middle of March is for the Lilly grant, and that's not up to us. That's the I C board meeting to vote in favor or not in favor, uh, and then we go into an agreement process, so. I, we're talking about a week and a half, you know, I mean, it's really fast, and it's not something I set up, just.
So would you need to be funded through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, to complete your projects?
I checked with the I D C, and we do not need, uh, county support in order to complete the projects in Attica. But I don't wanna go into the I C C board view, but that's fighting, and that's where we are right now. Uh, and they will, uh, you know, Lafayette had two projects, permitted to that were approved of all the various chambers. And then they returned that last year, and so I, it's just a kind of a schedule situation.
That's where we're just gonna go by here.
So that I can say that they're, they're in good shape, standing in full support of the county. Well, it's a question if I'm not working on the lead to pay your hat, but, but that's the issue.
I got, I got a question to the council commissioners. If I threw around a number and said. We wanna fund, fund Vega with the provision that restructured by us or their, their authority. Can we all agree we want to keep Vega? Can we all agree we wanna keep Vega for that? Well, I mean, keep Vega, that's.
Well, does Vega want us? Does Vega want the county?
Well, so let's. I mean, I don't know the number, but just ask. How you feel about?
Uh, uh, we had a contract, I don't, I believe, keep our contracts when you gather a contract, I agree, um. But at the same time, we, we don't have a, it's gonna be a special corporation, the county doesn't have the money. We, we had a, a comprehensive financial plan put together by Baker Chili Borch last year. Through twenty twenty-seven, and our finances, now they do not look good. Do not look good, and we're one of the more, uh, financially stable counties according to Baker Tilly in the state.
And it's not just now, it's, we're talking three to five years down the road. If we continue going the way we're going now. In three to five years, we are really gonna be in dire straits. If we don't pull back. Like I told, just told. K W earlier, if we don't take this year. And just pay what is necessary and hold on to what we have in reserves for at least this year, looking ahead, it's not gonna look great.
And we're not the only county in this situation.
I agree, but I think of economic development takes years, so it scares me to take a year off of economic development. Because we're gonna be in worse trouble if we don't go after those grants.
Yeah, I, and I'm not saying.
To go after those grants and do those projects that the county wants. That are transparent and that the county wants.
Right, and I'm not saying taking a year off, because I know on economics development, because I know it can take three to seven years for anything to. Make a turn.
It'll have to be additional appropriation. What we wanna start with and to keep them.
Saying that.
Personally, yes.
We don't stop breaking our commitments.
Exactly.
This should have been renegotiated before they extended the contract. Because there's things in here that, I didn't sign this contract, this was a contract that was signed by the commissioners, the previous commissioners. Um, and current, um, that's just my opinion. I think if, if they are in agreement to renegotiate that contract, I would be in.
I think that's why we're all here together.
Yes.
No, I feel jeopardize the Attica. Six million dollars. Yeah, I say, county gets their own economic development, let Vega go back to what they did best, which was in Attica. And not to jeopardize this. Covington didn't want their help, fine, Brad does it, Petersburg didn't want their help, fine. I mean, heard nothing, nothing but negative things. The whole entire time. So let them go back to, to get the Attica project finished and be done. Or the Vega board can, uh, re-vote and use some common, or use, I'll just say, use some common sense. And get, do this in a year. Why does it have to be done now? Let Rod finish this project. Why in the world does it have to be done now, right in the middle of getting six million dollars?
Well, they haven't enough funding, I think, surely to run till April.
If I D C hears that there's big turmoil in the county, Rob's position's gone, blah, blah, blah. They were, they could jerk that money, and that's exactly what we're talking about now.
Why did our contract? Yeah, why in the world did that happen, and two days later we have two commissioners?
Heard nothing but complaining, no money.
Thanks about you, Tim, and Brenda.
Well, I get it, but I'm a, I'm a big boy, I have a spine, I know how to handle it.
Me too.
People get on these committees and things and break contracts and do this stuff. Over a certain amount of people griping, or a certain amount of people, I don't like Rod, whatever. Man's brought ten point something million dollars and the.
That's why we're trying to figure it out, and we're making.
So you're getting rid of him?
And you broke our.
So you're getting rid of him? Men relationship, these people you can't mend relationships with, if they hate you, they hate you.
You got rid of them, right?
Got rid of who? Yeah, there was no money budgeted. There was nothing but griping. Commissioners sign contracts, we broke the contract, because it was best.
You can't sit there on your high horse and think that you know all, there's a whole group of people here that are smart people, Tim.
I'll tell you, I've got over thirty years' experience in county and municipal government. I do know a little more than the majority of people. Around this table right now, I will tell you that.
Appreciate that.
And I worked very hard for years to get things done. Sir, I haven't forgot any of that.
You forgot all that.
No.
You standing right back here talking to the lady in the back, telling how you vote, how you feel, doesn't matter what's.
We're, we're gonna get off subject here, I'm gonna get right back on.
What we were going on was a yes or no vote on, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. Funding if Vega is willing to renegotiate the contract. Okay, yes, yes, no, Denise.
According to everyone here, Aaron, I think the majority is that we would still like to work. With Vega and work something out with Vega, whether.
So, um, well, Bill, Bill's on, yeah, unfortunately, we have a board meeting on Thursday.
We have a board meeting on Thursday. We will let you all know. Here as soon as possible, right? So, yeah, we leave with that. We need you to love, thank you very much for your time.
I got one thing, um. Spend the night, but. I wanna talk to everybody about this greenway project. We, again, voted to run it down. And then we get busted. And. Um, it was a, uh. It's a trade project and it was a grant for matching four fifty. From a foundation, four fifty from ready, one, four fifty from the county. Made that commitment and vote and voting. Commission to council. Right? So, we talked about that, it's probably important to exit or what we want to do. We, we, we owe that to the foundation. My, I mean, hopefully discuss.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's just the community foundation planning.
I think the total project will come in about seven fifty, right?
It'll be a little more than that, Denise, I'm curious.
Well, I said it in the other meeting, so I'll say it again, I have mixed reservations about it, um, everybody heard from the last meeting that. There's a lot of questions that I have in regards to, um, the safety on the trail. Um, in that section, the other section I believe falls under the parks department, or no?
There, it's all outside.
So who controls that trail?
A week. Government. We take, we do all the maintenance time. We police. So I don't know about safety, you know, people have been going down there for years. And then there's four projects, four greenway projects, I think in Carroll, White, Warren, and that's. And all the others. And as I said before, it's gonna end in jeopardy, you know. With the. With the I E D C. With the greater Lafayette Congress. With our region. Yeah, if it's not.
On the nine tenths of a month.
Just at nine tenths.
That's the way I took it. Anybody else have anything different?
I emailed the planning plan to you guys and we could pass it around.
I printed mine out, Lori.
You what?
I printed mine out.
Oh, it's a big book, it was an attachment within there, but it's a, you printed yours, okay, um. It did, a lot of work was put into it, we, you reached out, Lynn was here earlier, they talked about regional prosperity, that is. Really how that got started, you're talking about economic development. Trails attract people, I know people from all over the state who come here, they'll come to Portland, they'll stop, they'll buy gas, they go through Petersburg, they get ice cream. Um, if you have a trail, people, people are interested in that, you know, if we're talking about the regional thing, we wanna attract people. They may wanna work in Lafayette, but we want them to buy property here, built here and thus. Um, that plan is, is the first part, but there, there were actually surveys, there's pilot projects in there. And it's a five county, it's a five county. So, it was shovel ready, that's why it's.
I think the commission still needs to be for four fifty. I think that they need, right, two twenty-five. The commitment needs to be for four fifty, I think they, from the county, from the county. I think they actually are gonna need two twenty-five. That they all need to drive, I don't think they're gonna need.
There was very little discussion about this, when we voted on this twice, if you remember, we voted on this twice.
Yes.
I was a no vote the first time, the only one, till Jim Lee changed his vote to no.
Yeah.
I voted for the second. I, I need to know, do they, even at the four fifty, did they want the county to write out a check to them for four fifty, or how, how do they want?
It was gonna be billed, they were gonna send it.
But I think actually when it gets built, it'll be two point five.
Is it a one-third match? Meaning the foundation, whatever the total project is, the foundation will do a third. We'll do a third and the grant is a third, exactly.
Did you make, you may do a little less than a third. That, that's real close to these.
We could do up to, and. But there again, where are we gonna find?
Highway garage, save that, but.
You wanna be in motion for that?
Yeah. Yeah, ordinance twenty twenty-five, one, it's one we just talked about, Judge Kimball gave it to me, it's basically given to, uh. Her board, the control, Jay Rattor. Did you get that?
I was getting sent for Kelly.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, see that?
So this is, this is what we've already ventured out of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you see the blank for the fund numbers, right in there, to let them know? It designated certain fund numbers that I know, okay.
Do you wanna explain that? Colleen's got some information, everyone. This is seated.
In the seat at fun, we have seven hundred and nineteen thousand today. We have approximately three hundred thousand budgeted this year to pay out of that. We do get a monthly deposit, um. I'm not sure what this year's amount is each month. My only concern is if you. Spend, spend it down, you're not gonna have money to budget the normal things that we have for next year. But, like I said, we have money coming in, we have a balance of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, we have approximately three hundred thousand budgeted. That's gonna come out of that seven nineteen.
It really, it'll be about new.
I, I think what Colleen is saying too, on what we get every month, it's gonna take us a while to build that back.
I'm not talking.
Right.
So, so would they bill us as, as they continue the project? Foundation, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll be, yeah, it's the same. It'll be later in the year, before, if, you know, which was that need.
He got these bids. And it just worked. With the provision that we passed that we're in front. So we've already done, he, he's thinking is, okay, I'm cool with commissioners, I'm cool with the council, I'll go ahead and go pulling. Guns and blades in and then we're saying. We're neg, we've reneged too many times. Don't say that. I mean, it, it looks bad for, for council, I mean, and then also, Indiana State. Economic Development, if they could, why would they help if they give the same money, if we're running a neg on stuff like that? So I'm saying.
Our first deposit this year was fifty-two thousand in that time, so be around that each.
It's not, here's something too, it's not even in my township, they're not, not even in the places I turned within. But I feel obligated because I, I did a yes vote.
And I did a yes over second term, so.
And, and the council did it, or commissioners, okay, so it, it doesn't. Only way it benefits me is I come over and watch the ballgame and saw them on the block, that, that's cool, but. I just feel.
Yeah, we made more commitments in the last four years than, than my entire first fourteen.
And that's.
And it can't continue.
We have to quit right there.
Absolutely.
That's it, that's it, we're done. Say, I, like Lynn just came to us. Suffered it. I mean, we didn't budget that, and that's fine. But now, you, you, you almost have to say, hey. We're done. We're not gonna commit like that, we're gonna be smarter. But I'm just one person, so.
Lynn doesn't do a lot of good things in the county.
I know.
And say.
It's like, well, that's, like you said, you can't, we're not, we won't see a lot of these things under fruition right away, we're talking some entire fifteen years, twenty years. Oh, I know you guys are, it is, it's on television.
You make a motion?
Yeah, you. One of us does, yeah. We can also.
I'll make that motion.
Obviously, if that amendment expenditure was two twenty-five, if their, if the billing is less than two twenty-five, I'm not gonna expend two twenty-five if the. Expenditures don't come in.
Or up to two twenty-five.
And that, and that's. It didn't have to be in the motion, but that's, I'm done, after that, when it stays.
Yeah, I, I've got a greenway in front of my house called Green Bay Road. I mean, the money is tight, I'm not, I'm not being a joke, the money is tight. And we can't borrow money like the federal government does.
Or print it.
But, but we just have to watch it, yeah.
So we're basically only giving them half. But, that's all, that's all I'm.
So Todd, your motion was for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, okay.
To top out two twenty-five of this, especially a third of two.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have it right.
Get it out of Stephen.
Out of Stephen.
You guys ready to vote? All of those in favor? Those opposed? Passes four to two.
I need four.
Four to two. Do we have anything else we need, as Carol?
We don't budget that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't budget that, Carol.
You don't. I didn't know.
That has helped you for the past two years. I don't, I don't think they allow it. It's never been talked about, but they allow us to include that in the budget.
It's always nice that we get it, because then we can use it, but it's never included in. Our budget, because they don't allow, yeah, like you said, they don't allow us to take that. Oh, that, we have.
I mean, the good thing is she did lock in several CDs.
Yeah.
So we're locked in for.
We, we, we did not hear from Susan before she retired at the end of the year. So Tiffany will have to get with us, that is her name, isn't it? Yeah, Tiffany will have to get with us on where we stand with our investments. Thank you for asking. Hey, Yuri, do you have anything? All in favor? Six oh.
For both meetings, Colleen.